Are we, I'm sorry, I got kicked off. So it is, are we, are we live?
Yes.
Okay, it is six o'clock on November eighteenth and I'm calling this Lacy City Council meeting to order. As you can tell, I am live or I am remote and this is one of the few times that I'm remote and the deputy mayor is remote. And so by practice, we've always had this most senior member of our council chair a meeting if the, if the mayor and the deputy mayor are not present. So I move that we have council member Greenstein chair our meeting from here on out. Have a second, please.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to have council member Greenstein chair this meeting on behalf of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? And that motion now actually carries and then I will turn it over to council member Greenstein to run the meeting for us the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so for starters, as you can see, we have three of our council members joining us remotely. Carolyn Cox, Deputy Mayor Miller, and Mayor Ryder, myself, Nick Dunning, and Robin Vasquez are here in person and Michael Stedman is excused tonight. If you're able, please stand to join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a quick reminder, those of you who are remote, if you could mute yourselves, that would be great. Thank you. Let me read our land acknowledgement. We, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Squawson Island Tribe. We acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized today who were absorbed and relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize the ancestors and their descendants who are still here. We recognize and respect the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek as the traditional stewards of this land since time immemorial and their role today in taking care of these lands in perpetuity. We recognize and have the responsibility to call attention to the histories of dispossession, forced removal, and abridged treaty rights that allowed our nation, state, and city to develop as they have today. We recommend that the community members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of eighteen fifty-four. With that, we have an agenda and consent agenda that we would entertain a motion on.
I move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as published.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on to public recognitions and presentations. First up is our Lacy Youth Council Report.
Good, oh, sorry. Good evening, council. My name is Makayla Pennington and I am a senior at River Ridge. Within the past month, we've had quite a bit going on at Ridge. We start off with our Veterans Day Assembly, which helped honor all the families who's served in the military. Next, we have our winter sports. Those are starting with wrestling, basketball, swim, et cetera. Our school introduced a new club this year. We are, we are forming a debate club. And a couple of our other clubs are hosting a lot of volunteer events. Our key club is partnering with Lacey to volunteer at Holiday Lights and Breakfast with Santa. And our ASL program is doing signing Santa, which is when our students at River Ridge sign Christmas songs for the community of Lacey, especially towards the deaf community. And the last thing on the agenda is we have a winter clothing drive going on right now to collect winter clothes for the homeless within our area. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Jennifer Zhang and I'm a junior from Northerson High School. In the past month, our student senate has met to discuss some new clubs that we're adding such as Model UN. Our theater program has presented their show Night of the Living Dead. National Honor Society hosted their induction ceremony welcoming thirty-two new members across all grades. Starting this Thursday, we'll have our annual Turkey Change Drive to support local nonprofit All Kids Win. And our Girls' Loyal has won the district championships and is now going on to state.
Good evening, council. My name is Shilla Matua and I'm a junior at Timberline High School. And so far, our Timberline Theater has also started their production of Clue, which has already run last weekend. And we are performing three more days this weekend. Our, our key club is also doing a food drive and we are collecting food donations up until this Friday. And we are also partnering with Lacey to do Breakfast with Santa and Holiday Lights. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Luca and I'm representing the homeschool community. Winter sports have started and school's very busy at this time of year. I'm looking forward to the upcoming Thanksgiving break. Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Arien. I'm a senior at Timberline High School and I'm representing our council. Today, we went over the public arts policies and we also went over the proposal for the poet laureate program. And we also wrote our own poems about Lacey. Also, me and Matthew are doing a project for future business leaders of America. We worked with the mayor last year on it and if any of you guys are alumni, please reach out. It would be great to have you guys on our project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the report. Okay, moving on to proclamations, as is our tradition. Nick, go ahead and start us on the first one.
City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas members of the Army, Air Force, Navy, Marines, Coast Guard, and Merchant Marine have answered a high calling to serve and have helped protect and secure the United States of America at every turn and?
Whereas our country is forever indebted to our veterans for their courage and exemplary service as selfless individuals who, when duty called, willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend the lives and liberty of others and? Carolyn, you're muted.
Whereas small businesses employ nearly forty-six percent of employees in the private sector in the United States.
We're on the wrong, the wrong one. I think we're on Veterans. Veterans Appreciation Month. Yeah, sorry.
I'm so sorry. Oh, here it is. All right. I beg your pardon, everybody. Whereas we honor those who laid down their lives in freedom's defense and made the ultimate sacrifice for our benefit and?
Whereas on Veterans Day, we salute those who have proudly worn the uniform of the United States of America and the families who have served alongside them. And we express our enduring gratitude, both in words and in actions, for their service. And whereas many veterans face overwhelming unknowns, through community collaborations, we can ensure that those who have served their nation receive the resources they deserve and?
Whereas through their commitment to freedom, our veterans have positively impacted millions of lives and made our country and the world more secure. And the city of Lacey resolves that their sacrifices will always be remembered.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the city of Lacey, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of November twenty twenty-five as Veterans Appreciation Month in the city of Lacey. And I encourage all community members to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans and support our local veterans and their family members. Signed by myself, Mayor Ryder, on this date.
If I can ask Command Sergeant Major Frank Handow and Command Sergeant Major Tresha Jeter to join me up here at the podium?
You don't have, you don't have to talk if you don't want to. No. So on behalf of the Sergeant Major's Association of the Northwest, we represent all branches of the service. Currently, we have about two hundred and sixty-five members, active, reserve, and again, against, against all branches. We actively participate in the JBOM community. We're here to support the service members that are still out there. We do receive some initiatives through the veterans programs that are out there. Brian, we would really like to thank him for the partnership that we have with the Lacey Veterans of Now. And then now we are the new custodians of the Lacey Gold Star Family Memorial and we take that honor very seriously. And if there's anything that we can ever do for the city of Lacey, please reach out to the Sergeant Major's Association. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, both for your service. It is greatly appreciated by this council and by the city of Lacey. Thank you. All right, we have one more proclamation and again.
City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas the city of Lacey celebrates and supports our local small business and the contributions they make to our local economy and community and?
Whereas there are currently thirty-four point eight million small businesses in the United States, which represents ninety-nine point nine percent of firms with paid employees in the United States and?
Whereas small businesses employ nearly forty-six percent of employees in the private sector in the United States and are responsible for sixty-three percent of new jobs created over the past twenty years and?
Whereas fifty-nine percent of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business and fifty-four percent reported they dined or ordered takeout from a small restaurant, bar, or cafe on Small Business Saturday in twenty twenty-four. And whereas the city of Lacey supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities and?
Whereas advocacy groups and public and private organizations in our community and across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the city of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Lacey. And I urge all community members to support small business and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this date.
The person who's supposed to receive this today, Michael Cade from the Economic Development Council, was unable to make it. So I'm going to ask that our city manager please make sure that is delivered. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council member. I'll make sure that gets delivered to them.
Okay, next on our agenda is public comment. We do have one person who has signed up for public comment, Mark Kido Bayashi. If you could please come to the podium. Please state your name and you have about three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder and council members. I'm, my name is Mark Kido Bayashi. I'm speaking on behalf of Thurston County Realtors Association here. I'm here to, today to thank the city of Lacey. Recently, on the November eighth, we had our first annual, I think in the art county, home buyer seminar that we put together in Lacey and the multi-jurisdictional effort was there, including Department of Commerce and other jurisdictions in our area, has participated, but the city of Lacey has been very instrumental in organizing and supporting as well. And you're able to give us a great discount to have a, actually, that meeting at the Lacey Community Center as well. And I still especially like to thank a couple of your staff. One of the Veronica Hands, who's the Equity and Inclusion Manager. And also Jennifer Adams, who's the Housing Coordinator. And of course, Rick Walk. He even came, came by to say hello during the, during the expo. So thank you, Rick, for your support. And I truly believe this was actually the real first one that we had about eighty participants. So that sounds a lot, but I think it is because we was very targeted audience. The people who came, came because they want to know about more by buying their home and homeownership. And some of our new homeowners and some of our have not owned a home for a while, so they want to know what is going on. And this was very targeted audience. We had a home buyer seminar in that morning and afternoon and most of these eighty people were attended those. So I think overall, it's a very successful event. And we didn't have anybody that was just there to pick up some trinkets and things like that. So to me, I think it was a very good event and we'd like to continue to do this as well. But a little bit, a little bit of the background. Right now, median price in Thurston County, what do you think the median price of Thurston County is a home? Five? Right now, it's about five thirty-nine. And I know that seems like a market slowing down, but to year to, over year, we're still about four point three percent increase in price. And what do you think the median price was in two thousand nineteen before COVID? It was about three forty. So we have an increase of about roughly two hundred thousand in the last six years. So what does that mean is yes, it's affordability is an issue, but? And what has changed is one of the data from National Social Realtor shows the median age of a first-time home buyer is first time we reached age forty. So that shows that how people are buying has changed. So more and more, we need to educate more and about the homeownership as well and what is important about homeownership as well. And Lacey has been very instrumental in from the property development to allowing. And I remember the days when manager Rick and I used to work together to cross the counter, doing the permits and so forth. And, but those are important. But to me, the homeownership is very important for, I think, all of us. Number one, it does build equity and build the wealth in your home as well, but not just that. Brings the stability to family and stability for kids to learn and health. And also it creates more a involvement into community as well as a citizen as well. And the last thing I want to share with you and is that usually the Federal Reserve Bank survey shows the homeownership net worth of the homeowners is about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars compared to ten thousand dollars for renters. So there are some wealth that's involved. But I truly believe that even though it's hard to own a home and there are a lot of obstacles, but I truly believe the American dream of home, homeownership still is here. And I truly like to thank the city of Lacey for continued support and will continue to like to work together to continue the American dream of homeownership. Thank you very much for letting me go over a little bit over time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, we have no one else signed up. Is there anyone signed up online? Is there anyone else wishing to address this council? Please state your name and where you live and you have three minutes.
All right, my name's Lee Meyer. I'm the owner of a rental property in the Lacey urban growth area that's on City of Lacey water. And this is regarding a surprise utility bill that I got for a tenant. To start out, it's been an extremely hard year for my family. Let me back up. I've worked, had a job since I was fifteen. Sometimes multiple jobs, paid my way through everything. Fast forward, I now have four kids. A year ago, actually early September, I was going to be getting new tenants and I called into the city two different times and said, explained, I'm the owner, I'm going to be getting tenants, what do I need to do? Nothing. Like they said, just they call, put it in their name. We started having problems with the tenants. I called the city again early this year and said, you know, I asked, are they delinquent? Are they paying their bill? I was told that that information could not be given to me even though I was the owner. And I said, so I won't be held responsible. And they said, nope, you won't be held responsible. Little did I know that about RCW thirty-five twenty-one two seventeen that requires the city to let me know if they are delinquent, especially when I call and ask. So I got a surprise bill last week. And this is after spending fifty thousand dollars in attorney's fees this year, tens of thousands of dollars of lost rent, damages that are likely a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars. The house is destroyed. We still have not received possession of the property. And after months of these expenses, I don't know how I can continue to provide for my family, put food on the table, provide medical needs for my daughter, let alone even think about Christmas to get a surprise bill on top of that, of something that I've been calling and asking about. I did call Thursday last week and asked to speak to the utility billing supervisor, left a message. I've not received a call back. I called again today and was able to talk with the front desk staff. And I was made aware of a form that I could have filled out right from the beginning that could have exempted me from being held responsible. I was also just made aware today that the account was allowed to be delinquent for over a year since they put the utilities in their name last October twenty twenty-four. The account, since they put it in their name, has received monthly delinquent fees and shut-off notices in the amounts of fifty-five dollars every single month for over a year. I'm still waiting on a call back from the supervisor. Given the fact that I've called multiple times, I was given wrong info, the RCWs were not followed. I was not made, made aware of a form that I could have filled out to be exempted. I'm requesting that the bill be written off. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Someone, a staff member will follow up with you. Promise you. Thank you.
We, we have, we have her information and so the city manager can talk to her?
We do, yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the council? If not, we are going to go ahead and move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a twenty twenty-six budget hearing. This will be a public hearing and I am going to call the public hearing to order and turn it over to Troy Wu and Chelsea Yarwood to give the presentation.
Great. Thank you, council member Greenstein. Good evening, council. As councilor Greenstein announced, we are conducting the first hearing on the two thousand twenty-six budget. We must conduct two before the council can adopt for the following year. The purpose of the hearing is, of course, to receive any public comment on the budget and to receive any direction from the city council if it would like to see any changes to the proposed budget. So I'll try to be brief in terms of the information we provide. You've, you know, had the full city manager presentation in October. But we do have some changes within the budget, slight changes that have occurred since the city manager's presentation. Here is the new proposed twenty-six budget here on screen. It's about two hundred and twenty-four point six million dollars being proposed. This is about ninety-two point one million less than the amended two thousand twenty-five budget. You could see the, the pretty large variances there in the far right column. We'll have some more detailed information for the general fund, so I'll kind of keep my comments to the capital projects. That's, that's the main reason for the decrease. You could see capital projects, that's the second line there. It's a reduction of about sixty-five million dollars. Just across the board, a lot less capital improvement happening next year. The, the primary project, of course, is the police station. We had about thirty-eight million dollars just in that project alone in two thousand twenty-five. And we're nearing completion of that project. In terms of the water and wastewater utilities, about thirteen point four million dollar reduction between those two. That is almost entirely a reduction to the capital improvement programs for those utilities as well. So again, you were seeing about a ninety-two point one million dollar reduction compared to the current year. Here's the same information in graph form. Really what's interesting here is the, the amount of the budget that utilities takes up. It's about fifty-one point seven percent of the entire city budget, so very significant portion. You know, what's within these funds, about forty-one million dollars in capital improvement program for next year. That's about thirty-five percent of the utility budgets. I always like to point out that we do collect lot fees on behalf of the lot operation. That's about seventeen point one million dollars of that utility slice of the pie. That's about fifty-seven percent of the wastewater budget, so actually the vast majority of the wastewater goes to treatment. It's also worth noting, capital projects for next year, it's about twenty point seven million dollars. You know, you saw on the previous slide, this is a pretty significant decrease, but this is still a pretty large number. We're continuing to invest in the community. We're continuing to address infrastructure needs, repairs, and, you know, of an aging system. So we are continuing to invest in our, in our assets. Looking at the general fund itself, the general fund is made up of, of seven funds now. Our newest fund being public safety. You can see that the third item listed that, of course, is how we track the countywide two-tenths of one percent sales tax that is dedicated to public safety purposes. But the general fund budget for next year is proposed at seventy-four point two million. This is about fourteen point seven million dollars less than the current year. I have a detailed site for the current expense fund, but the current expense fund is being reduced by eleven point four. 11.4. But the other significant variances is occurring in streets, about $959,000 less. This is almost entirely due to a one-time transfer that occurred in 2025. We transferred $1 million from the streets fund into Artero Streets, and that's to help with the design of the Seventh Avenue and College Street Roundabout design. Capital equipment there at the last department listed about a $2.3 million reduction. This is really just an overall reduction to capital equipment replacement or new capital purchases. It's really just a condition and limitation on revenues available. But again, general fund budget being proposed at about 14.7 million less than the current year. So looking at the current expense fund in detail, this is the fund that I think provides the services that citizens most identify with, parks, police, engineering, city council, of course. The current expense fund by itself is being proposed at $61.9 million for 2026. That's about 11.4 million less than the current year. I do have highlighted the significant variances within the current expense fund. The first is Health and Human Services, a reduction of about $4.5 million. This is really related to one-time expenditures that were budgeted in 2025. We have $3 million for the regional permanent supportive housing project. There's $700,000 in 2025 for the purchase of the property on Mallon Road. Again, one-time purchases. I will note that the regional project likely isn't to occur this year. That will likely be a carryover, but at this point is not considered in the 2026 budget. The next significant variance is common facilities. It's an increase of about $333,000. This is almost entirely due to interfund services related to IT, our information technology charges. And that increase is really related to a one-time replacement of our data backup system. We're finding two things. We are, you know, we have different security needs. We have a robust emergency backup of our data in case anything happened to our data if it got corrupted for any reason. But even, I think, a bigger consideration is our amount of data that we are storing is growing exponentially every year. You talk about police body worn camera video, cameras on vehicles, just the size of files that we have, all of our messaging that's occurring within the city, that's all stored and that's just really making the amount of data that we keep grow quite quickly. The police department's proposed budget is an increase of $826,000. This is really related to two different areas. One is overtime. The overtime budget was adjusted about 390,000. We've talked about the line-by-line analysis. That was one of the items that we were underbudgeted and just have been for many years. So that's really a correction to the budget. The other increase for significant increase for police is in the equipment rental charge. That's about a $390,000 increase. Now, it really just relates to the timing of replacement dollars for police cars. As you know, those are pretty significant increases and we collect for that replacement on an annual basis. The Public Works budget in total is projected to increase $756,000. That's almost all labor. This is a very labor-intensive service. The two areas that are most impacted by that are engineering services and water resources. We do have a reduction of about $1.3 million in community and economic development. This is mostly related to one-time projects in 2025, and we have special projects being reduced by about $730,000. There were three, you might remember, there are three Department of Commerce grants awarded in 2025 that were expended. And then we have economic development being reduced by 400,000 compared to 2025. And then finally, transfers out, a reduction of about $8.2 million. That is related to one-time transfers out for capital projects, most notably Cuyahoga Park Phase 1A. That was a $6 million transfer out in 2025. So again, your current expense fund proposed budget is $61.9 million.
Question?
Would you like us to hold questions until the end or just go ahead slide by slide?
No, we could take them right now.
I have a couple, if that's all right. So we're looking at a number of significant reductions in a couple of these different areas. I think this is really comprehensible for people in the community, like we are spending money in these different areas. Are positions being reduced in any of these areas? Like, are we actually losing FTEs anywhere?
No. In fact, we're adding three positions citywide, two of which will be in this fund, but yeah, no reductions of staff. We are not laying off, so we've continued that long history. In fact, I don't think Lacey has ever had a layoff, so we're quite proud of that in terms of our fiscal responsibility going forward.
Thank you. The other question I had was about the police department overtime. Is that due to changes in the collective bargaining agreement or special projects? Why are we increasing the budget for overtime by so much?
You know, like I said, it's more of a correction, or I don't think there's a specific reason. We've been really proactive in terms of some of our property crime. Think about, you know, our commercial area. We've, you know, we've really paid more attention there and had some, some programs have been really worthwhile there. But, you know, overtime is a, you know, it's a pretty common occurrence, especially within police. Police is also a service delivery that isn't predictable. Crime happens and overtime must be incurred to, you know, investigate those types of things. So again, it's more of a correction than a change. And I don't know, but I hate to put the chief on spot, but maybe he has something a little more specific.
So I had my staff conducted an analysis for overtime expenditures. About a third of those overtime expenditures are due to holiday pay because we have to have officers working 365 days a year. Part of their workdays land on holidays, so they get paid for that holiday on overtime. The rest of it is extension shift due to ongoing investigations. I have expanded by 20 positions in the last five years. So with that new generation of officers coming in, it takes them a little bit longer to write reports and do investigations. That costs some extension of shifts for overtime. And also, there's, we did augmented business area patrols to make sure we were addressing retail theft. That was part of our efforts as well. So it's kind of a conglomeration of all those factors that go into it. And as Troy was speaking to, there has been a pretty consistent use of overtime during that period, and we'd never really adjusted a line item to reflect that.
So we're increasing it right now instead of having to do a budget amendment halfway through next year?
Correct.
One last question. How are we on vacancies in PD? Because sometimes overtime is a result of vacancies, but I thought we were doing pretty well.
We have been doing pretty well. Currently, I have, I have two in the academy. I have one pending. I have three in backgrounds, and I'm currently looking for three openings, to fill three openings right now.
Okay, let's look at the revenue side of the general fund budget. I won't spend a lot of time here. We had a, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Can you, for the public, go over what makes up the city council budget? Because that's obviously not city council, all city council wages or anything like that.
You bet. Certainly, there are wages within that budget, but you're right, it doesn't make up the entirety of the budget.
Not even close.
There's, there's travel. There's a lot of memberships that fall within this budget. So our membership to National League of Cities as well as Association of Washington Cities. There are budgets in there for special projects within this, and I think the Equity Map is a recent project. It's been within this budget. So there's a lot of other initiatives. I think the neighborhood grant program is within this budget as well. So yes, you're correct. That is not the entirety of just council wages, but there's a lot of different special programs that are paid from here.
Thank you for that.
You bet. Okay, general fund revenues, as I was saying, I won't spend a lot of time here because we had a very robust revenue hearing a couple of weeks ago. But there are slight changes that have occurred within this area too. But general fund revenues, $74.2 million. We, of course, have a balanced budget. You could see that the most significant change is all other. It's a $17 million decrease. This is almost all entirely related to the use of beginning cash for one-time projects. Great Cuyahoga Park was a $6 million use of reserves. The permanent supportive housing project was $3 million in reserves. The college and Seventh Roundabout also is within that item as well. The other significant, two other significant increases there are utility tax, and we talked about this during the hearing as well. But we're, you know, in terms of trend analysis and known rate increases are contributing to that projected increase. The most significant areas of utility tax growth that we foresee is electricity of about $310,000, natural gas, about $200,000, and city-owned utilities, about $315,000 for next year. The other significant variance is service fees that are near the bottom, a $1.3 million increase projected. That is almost all internal service fees. It's about 1.2 million of that increase. And those are really related to engineering design services. So all of those transportation projects and utility projects that we have in a budget, those are mostly designed and managed in-house. So those are service charges to those functions, whether it be utility or the street fund, as well as maintenance to right-of-way and parks maintenance and utility sites such as water towers and those types of things. So a lot of different internal services being charged to those, to those functions. Changes to the budget.
Okay, so Troy's been talking a lot about the difference between 2025 and 2026, but we've also had a few changes between the first iteration of our proposed budget and now. So I'm going to go over a few of those. Keep in mind that this listing isn't any one fund in particular. It kind of jumps around and there's no real particular order. So starting with revenues, we have received two property tax, property tax changes. One is the refund levy, which is $107,000, $107,125, as well as the new construction adjustment. And we've actually had a change since our revenue hearing with the new construction adjustment, and it went down by $430, so a slight change. So the net impact is a plus $106,695 for property tax revenue. Also, the lodging tax advisory committee has proposed utilizing $108,000 worth of lodging tax reserves for 2026. And then also, we have some good news with a reduction to the budget policy implementation reserve in the amount of $111,831. And that's just due to the net impacts of the different revenues and expenses that have changed between the last time we talked to you and now. On the expense side, we have joint animal services assessments increasing by $20,659. The Long Lake Management District assessment was increased by $6,373. And then again, with lodging tax, kind of the flip side, the, where use of reserves is a revenue, and then we also have the expenditures for awards for 2026. And then we also have the Department of Health increase fees impacting the water fund by $5,000. And then additional utility capital improvement projects were added in a total amount of $30,000.
Okay, we do want to highlight a series of budget initiatives that are included in the 2026 budget. City manager did a great job in covering most of these, but I do want to highlight them again. They're, have significant impacts and improvements for the community. The first area I'd like to highlight is economic growth or our strategic economic development investments. We have $657,000 within the proposed budget. The areas at this point that are going to be invested in is annexation study, the depot site, and operation support for the Lacey Maker space. We do have a series of operational requirements which result in an increase of about $727,000. This is a mixture of interlocal agreements that have built-in increases as well as just other operational things we want to prioritize. We do have increases to district court, defense and jail services. We, the final year of the district court interlocal agreement with Thurston County expires at the end of the, at next year, but that did include a $54,000 built-in increase for 2026. We have the first year of our implementation of the new public defense standards in the 2026 budget. So this is a 10-year phase in. So year one, we have estimated that's going to be an $80,000 increase. Again, 10-year phase in, so it's a significant impact to future budgets. Then jail services, we have an increase of about $154,000. That's a combination of adding bed nights as well as just an increase to the cost per bed night. Legal support, we have increases to prosecution as well as this general legal.
Just a quick question, Troy. You said it's a 10-year phase in. I want to make sure I understand it correctly. It's $80,000 in the first year, and then it's an additional 80 each of those ongoing years, right? So by year 10, we're talking $800,000 increase, correct?
About. It might be closer to a million. It's going to ramp up, but yes, above always.
Thank you.
We have some emergency management training. This is a part of implementation of our comprehensive emergency management plan. That's about $100,000 in the budget for that. Cuyahoga Park Maintenance and Operations, I have a slide right after this that kind of outlines the specific cost increases there. At your last meeting on November 30, you approved the lot Class A pilot demonstration project. That's $50,000 in our water fund. We're continuing with our pit debris disposal. This is $160,000. This is just kind of a continual operational issue for us. And then we have $20,000 increase for sidewalk maintenance supplies. This is really just to mark those sidewalks as part of that program. Cuyahoga Park increases, this is, of course, is a new park that requires some maintenance and operations. Hard cost increases for next year is just over $76,000. This is kind of a combination of things. Equipment rental increases, again, that's our vehicles and equipment. And that's really just the maintenance and replacement of the equipment you see there. We're investing about $312,000 for new equipment. So about a $40,000 a year cost to maintain that equipment and replace it. Then there's a combination of basically services and utilities for that park that make up the rest of those hard costs. We also have security contracts that are going to have to be put in place for that park. Repairs and maintenance, maintenance of facilities. We talked a great deal about this during the initial conversation of our reserve actions that we need to take later this year. But, you know, these are, I think, just about all of these are being funded by reserves. So about $529,000 of reserves going to these one-time repairs. But this is, you know, this is going to be a continual challenge for us as we discuss with the council. We just have aging infrastructure. So we're going to have to start investing in those replacements and those upgrades. And you could see by this list, we prioritized those for next year. And this is not the entire list of requests. These are the items that we deemed most in need for next year. So there's the elevator here at City Hall, and we actually had two elevators that were proposed, but we're only going to upgrade one. The other elevator is at the police station. We wanted to see, you know, what the plans and what we were going to do at the old station when we vacate that. So makes sense to delay that at least by a year. Sound system upgrades and replacements at the community center in the rack. So repairs at the community center, roof replacement at the Virgil Clarkson Senior Center. And then we have some drainage issues we need to take care of at the rack. I'm looking at critical resources. So again, we had a far bigger list of things that we needed, but these were the things that we deemed most critical. So the budget does include about $200,000 for these three areas. Bino Tax Software, much-needed upgrade to how we administer business and occupation tax. We have a series of line item adjustments for public safety related to digital forensics and the SWAT team. And we also had some legislative changes that are going to result in some increased costs for the police academy. We're going to have to pay a little more for lodging and meals going forward. And then we have an investment in a Zoom call center. This is This is specifically for utility billing, the utility billing function. We just have kind of a normal phone system. It's not really geared towards customer service, and that is much needed. So this is a relatively small investment, about $15,000 per year, to give us a true call center software that will allow us to monitor calls, track calls, give us more data on calls in terms of number and duration. So a pretty good investment there, I think. Internal service charges, talked a little bit about this in the previous slides, but an overall increase of just under 1.2 million dollars overall for the city. This is really two different areas. Equipment rental, which is vehicles, heavy equipment, and then information services, which is IT or information technology. Both are going up significantly. Equipment rental's going up about $670,000. A lot of that, again, is related to the timing of vehicle replacements. We have, you know, a pretty big investment in those pieces of equipment. So as, it's really a cyclical nature in terms of when those vehicles are replacements and when those replacement dollars get collected. So again, about a $670,000 increase citywide. Information systems, about $515,000 increase. Again, I mentioned that, that the data backup and recovery, disaster recovery system upgrade and replacement for next year makes up the vast majority of that increase for 2026. Do need to talk about the police station. Again, another new facility. This is a fairly significant increase that we have embedded in the, in the police department budget, 380, almost $390,000 increase. And that's just the direct costs related to the police station. Everything from custodial contracts to maintenance contracts to utilities, electricity and natural gas, as well as insurance on that, on that new building. Really, to put things in perspective, that seems like a lot, but it's actually not that much when you compare that to the City Hall. So let me give you a little, little stats on terms of square footage for the two facilities. So City Hall and the existing police station, that's 83,000 square feet. The police station, the existing police station on its own is 19,000 square feet. The new police station and trainings, the training facility, that's going to be nearly 60,000 new square feet of area that we need to operate and maintain. I think the O and M budget for City Hall is about 1.2 million. So again, while 390,000, it is a lot, but really in proportion to the square footage, it's, it's actually not that bad. And do have to point out, this is a new building. We're going to have one year worth of warranty, I believe. So that is bringing the first year cost down, and it is a new building. It's just not going to need that same level of maintenance, at least in the short term. But I do need to, oh, yes.
Is a part of the reason that the building is cheaper per square foot because it's more energy efficient? Or did we get a deal on the contracts for providing the services? I think Lacey staff are providing most of the services for the building, right?
It is. It's, you know, some of it's energy efficiency, but a lot of it is just because it's a new building. We're not going to have the same level of repair that we have with an older facility. And if you think about the reason why we built a new police station, a condition of police station, a lot of repair maintenance that goes along with that. But it's largely due to the warranty in the first year that, that's bringing that cost down. It's probably 150 to 200,000 more in the long-term projection in terms of the annual operations and maintenance for the police station. You mentioned actually the internal staff, and that's where the indirect costs there you see at the bottom of the slide. There's street sweeping of the parking lot, there's groundskeeping, there is that facility maintenance that we handle internally. We're going to have to do all this unfortunately without adding positions next year, just due to the condition of the budget. So it's really a statement that other service levels are going to be diluted. So, you know, we just need to keep that in mind as we think about service levels going Other major initiatives, you know, as we talked about in earlier slides, the capital improvement program, pretty dramatic decrease from '25 to '26. But we still have some, some pretty significant initiatives in '26. We're going to finish up the police station in the first quarter of next year. We have 3.2 million to finish that up. We have 15 vehicles that we're replacing next year. That's going to be 1.6 million for those replacements. And then we have the next phase of design for the rack improvements, and that's related to the public facility district sales tax. So the next phase of design is estimated at 1.9 million in the '26 budget. Not going to go through all of these in detail, but the utilities has a significant capital improvement program, as you saw from, you know, the pie chart earlier. Waters capital budget is proposed at just under 25 million. Waste water is 10.5 million, and stormwater at about 2.5 million. We'll point out that there are, there is debt payments that occur from these funds, and they're not included in those numbers, but we have pretty low debt load in terms of utilities. Transportation, 7.1 million capital improvement program for 2026. This is mostly design and right-of-way acquisition. There's not going to be a lot of construction activity within this fund next year. But, you know, with design comes construction, so, you know, that will occur in the future. But yeah, these, in fact, these projects here, the LED lighting, of course, is just replacement of LED lights, but the other three significant projects are all design and right-of-way. Transportation Benefit District, you received a detailed outline of the projects that are going to be funded from this voter-approved sales tax, but a 5.4 million dollar proposed budget for 2026. The most significant being the Willamette Drive overlay. And then do want to highlight that we do have continuing initiatives in terms of human and social services and sustainability. We're going to continue with the $300,000 Human and Social Services Grant Program, the Neighborhood Grant Program that is embedded in the council budget of $60,000. Going to continue with the LED light conversion. We're going to continue with our climate implementation initiatives. That's $200,000 in the 2026 budget. I will point out that is continuing to be funded with reserves. And then we have a couple areas I'd like to highlight in terms of the mobile outreach team. This is a team that works very closely with our police department. This is being paid from the new public safety sales tax. And then we're continuing our rapid response team in terms of, you know, maintaining, you know, our city. That's about $230,000. This is also being funded by reserves.
Okay, workforce considerations. I know this came up briefly earlier. There were only a few positions approved for the new fiscal year just due to our economic constraints. And the ones that were approved do not actually add financial burden to the general fund. So they are either utility positions, or they are billable to the utilities just based on the work that they do. The first one is some kind of a position that we're adding for kind of a utility project and design restructure that hasn't been fully identified yet, but we just know that the need is there. That one is in the general fund, but it is billable to the utilities based on the work that they're doing. And then also, similarly, in the utility billing area, we're looking to do a restructure. Position isn't fully defined at this point yet, and that is funded through the utilities. And then also, a journey-level maintenance tech within the stormwater utility. Use of reserves. So the current expense fund is utilizing just over, under 4.8 million worth of reserves in order to balance the 2026 budget. Roughly 2.9 is that budget policy implementation reserve that we've talked a lot about. 657,400 is use of economic development reserves, and 375,000 is going towards repair and maintenance costs. Other items funded out of one-time reserves are the rapid response team, body and fleet cameras, energy conservation project, emergency management training, and also Washington State Clean Building Standards Consultant. In the community building fund, we're utilizing 183,777 dollars in reserves, and that's mainly for repair and maintenance. And then we also are using reserves and capital equipment fund of 227,054. This, the majority of that is used for replacement equipment for stuff that's starting to age out. And then we also have just under 24,000 going towards new equipment, and that's for the Kewyo Park.
Okay, we're almost there. So let's talk budget perspectives. And specifically, I want to talk about our budget approach for 2026. And I think the council's aware that we're about halfway through a two-year strategic plan that will help us address our budget gap. Our plan is to continue to develop that plan and implement for the 2027 budget. So we're talking about that almost $3 million gap in our, in our budget. So we had a three-pronged approach, as you know. Revenue opportunities, you know, the council's been very engaged in this process so far. We're looking at, you know, possibilities and recommendations for revenue opportunities and enhancements. And really, our goal here is to align our service charges with the actual cost to provide those services. The second prong in that is investments in economic growth. We've had a lot of discussion about what does this look like in the future and how important these investments are. So we're really trying to attract new investments that will eventually expand the tax base. We are currently working with a consultant to develop a five-year economic development strategy. And then the final prong is enhancing fiscal efficiency. This is, you know, includes the comprehensive review of all our programs, our service levels going forward. So we're really looking for ways and opportunities to reduce expenditures while at the same time maintaining, maintaining our core functions and our, our service levels. I do have slides for each one of these areas. Revenue opportunities, I'm not going to go through all of these. You know, our Assistant City Manager, Kelly Fong, has done an incredible job in walking you through each and one of these over a series of meetings. So there's more discussions. We haven't made any decisions on these, and none of these are included in the budget projections. But there's certainly opportunity there, and we, you know, will continue those conversations going forward. You do have one final area to discuss, and that is the public safety sales tax, optional tax that is authorized under House Bill 2015. That could generate nearly 1.9 million per year in sales tax or public safety. You are tentatively scheduled to have that discussion sometime in January of next year. Looking at the economic growth piece of our plan, kind of want to look backwards a little bit. We do have a 2.5 million committed reserve that the council has identified for investments in this very area. Here's just a whole list of items that we've invested in over the years. We've had continued support of the Makerspace. It started with capital investments for machinery, which has kind of transitioned into operations and maintenance support. We've made investments in Lacey Midtown. We've made investments at the Food Truck Plaza. I forgot about this one because it took place quite a while ago, but we, we did some beautification of the Midtown area. We, we did some undergrounding of utilities on Sixth Avenue when development, in conjunction with developments. So definitely invest, continuing investment there. And then the remaining things that are listed are just programs that we've invested with in partnership with the Economic Development Council in terms of investments into economic In the 2026 budget, as you saw that previous slide, about $657,000 included for the Makerspace annexation and the depot. I do want to point out that we have about, almost a million dollars of requests that are still under consideration. We really put that on hold until the council could have that conversation on the overall five-year strategic plan. So that is actually coming before our council on December 9th. So you're going to hear what that proposal is. We're working with Eco Northwest on that strategy, so we're definitely looking forward to that conversation with the council, again, December 9th is when that'll occur. And then the final prong of our strategy is fiscal efficiency. We're looking at core services and service levels. We really started this mid-2025. We did a line-by-line analysis, and Chelsea's going to follow up some details. You've, you've heard quite a bit about that already, but this is significant. We reduced the general fund budget by about $940,000. So we, we definitely want to share that, a little more details with you in the slides to follow. And then we've talked just very briefly with the council, and we're just now starting those discussions internally about budget controls. Anything from line item controls to additional preapprovals on discretionary expenditures, considerations about travel, specifically out-of-state travel. So we'll be talking about those in earnest here very shortly as we begin the 2026 budget. Okay, line-by-line analysis.
All right. So the last time we really talked about this in detail was in September, so we wanted to just provide a recap, just to refresh on what happened. We took a comprehensive look at most of the operating expense codes as part of our '26 budget development process. The purpose of this exercise was to right-size all the applicable line items based on recent history. The intention was to address where data consistently showed that we were either over or underspending. To summarize, it was a four-step process. So first, we utilized a six-year average just to create a benchmark. Second, weight was applied to more recent fiscal years if that seemed that it was a noticeable factor. Third, we considered, we, consideration was given for known operating changes that could alter the future needs versus that historical benchmark. And then fourth, the department feedback was requested. And so this part was very important because we didn't want to adjust anything beyond what the department felt was manageable. And so we implemented all of that feedback within those final results. So as Troy mentioned, the general fund impact of the process was a budget savings of $938,638. However, citywide, the impact was a budget savings of $248,835. Some funds, like the Water Fund, required an overall increase to meet operational demands. Drilling in on the general fund, we had some service areas with a budget savings and some with a budget increase. Service areas including admin, CED, Parks, Culture, and Rec, and Public Works were identified as having an overall budget reduction within this analysis only. And then service areas including Capital Expense Fund, Police, and Social Services were identified as having an overall budget increase, again, just within this isolated analysis. So this illustrates the right-sizing impact of the exercise, not just a budget reduction, although we did see an overall budget reduction, which was helpful. To further drill in, this table, there's a lot going on, but we tried to highlight the ones that I'm going to talk about. You can see kind of all of the movement that occurred within each service area. So for example, kind of left to right, administration adjustments included higher allocations for agreements and communications, and it was offset by reductions in professional services and kind of miscellaneous line items. Community and economic development, overall, the budget declined largely due to those one-time initiatives that Troy was talking about, an example being those Department of Commerce grants. And those were coded mostly to economic development and the kind of miscellaneous, which in CED's world is kind of a special projects-type category. Parks, Culture, and Recreation budgets rose for things like leases and utility services, but while funding for repair and maintenance as well as salary and benefits were scaled back. Police, increased resources were directed towards salary benefits and communications, and also offset by professional services and supplies. And then Public Works, utility services and supplies saw higher funding, whereas professional services and repair and maintenance experienced reductions. So this graph illustrates just an alternative look at the overall effect on the general fund, expenditure categories kind of in total. So salary and benefit category went up mainly due to right-sizing of overtime and part-time seasonal line items. And this came up earlier, so the chief and Troy basically did my job for me on this one, but an example is the majority of the police budget increase was related to overtime and just right-sizing that line item. Those had not increased throughout recent years proportionate to the department's growth and operational needs. growth and operational needs. Next, we have the professional services category decreasing primarily due to the completion of one-time initiatives. Some of those are things like the CEMP implementation, concluding work on the equity map, and then also the communications plan. Additionally, an analysis of trends revealed opportunities to reduce employee wellness services based on actual usage patterns. And then meanwhile, Public Works completed a condition assessment project, and there was also services needed for repurposing a copy room over at the shop, the maintenance shop, into an office space. And so that was completed as well, which allowed us to decrease this category. Repair and maintenance category was reduced significantly. This was mostly due to the removal of residual budget allocations from other previous projects. So those projects were either completed or postponed, but their associated budget lines remained in the accounting system until we made these adjustments. So that was just cleaning that up. And then lastly, kind of those last two bigger categories on the chart are related to CED. Those are, again, those kind of one-time initiatives that we were able to reduce out of the budget just for the change from year to year.
Okay, two more slides. Next steps, we, like I said, we have to conduct two hearings. We'll conduct our final hearing on December 2nd, and then we plan to present the budget ordinance to the council for consideration on the 16th. So in closing, this is a budget that continues to serve the community as they've come to deserve and expect. This is a budget that continues to invest in our community, continues to preserve assets, it continues to plan for the future of this community, and it does all this despite the $3 million deficit. And this isn't by accident. I want to recognize the leadership of the City Council and the City Manager for sound and clear guidance, as well as adoption of fiscal policies that guide everything we do related to our city finances. It's really because of these policies that we are in the position we're in. We have a lot of financial flexibility to maintain our service levels while giving us time to develop and implement a strategic plan to, to bridge that gap. So it's really about flexibility, not having to make, you know, we can make methodical decisions versus reactionary decisions. So I certainly appreciate that. It certainly makes our job in finance a lot easier. So thank you for that. Also want to thank my, my colleagues on the executive leadership team for their leadership and all of their staff's hard work. And I, of course, can't fail to mention the countless hours from the finance department that goes into this process. Certainly, I want to recognize Chelsea. She's definitely taken, taken a much larger leadership role in the budget, and she's done a great job. So again, thank you to everyone involved. And with that, I will turn this back over to council for questions, and then, of course, any testimony from the public.
Thank you, Troy and Chelsea. So before I go into the council, is there anyone from the public with any questions or comments or concerns that would like to address us during this public hearing? Not Nick?
I just wanted to clarify, was the $940,000 adjustment comparison 2025?
That's correct.
So then, and that's what I assumed, but the point I'd like to make that if you just assume that inflation should, you know, was 3%, the budget should be up another, you know, $2 million plus. So in reality, it's like $3 million, you know, less that we're spending. So in perspective, you know, a million might not seem like a much, but, you know, $3 million is, is quite a big difference year over year, seeing as that we're actually spending less this year, and inflation is still pretty high. So it, it, it's probably harder than just the $940,000 than, than it shows. So I just want to commend you guys for, for doing that.
There. Anyone else on council with any questions or comments? Rob?
This budget is 71% the size of last year's budget, or rather, 25 budget versus 26. I know that's not general fund money. That's a lot due to capital projects, but it's worth mentioning, this budget is much smaller for our 2026, and we are facing revenue shortfalls, and we have reduced our budget without cutting FTEs, which I think is something to be celebrated. I don't want us to like skip past that. I know that we've had to be very lean, and in fact, we are adding positions, but we're not adding enough positions based on the workload that we face in any of our areas. I know there were a lot of requests that came to the City Manager that didn't end up in the budget because we just couldn't find a way to pay for them while still being realistic about our economic situation. But I want to say thank you to everybody who made this budget possible without reducing staff and still providing the services that the citizens appreciate here in Lacey. So thank you.
There is nothing further? I will close this public hearing.
Just real quick.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Malcolm.
Okay. So, you know, these last couple of years, we've spent really looking at, at infrastructure and where our, our, our current buildings are coming up short and, and so on. And we took the initiative to, to, you know, take those dollars, spend them, make them permits to the city, and I'm very happy about it, but also at the same time, kind of glad that we're done for now, is, is the best way I can say that. But I, I think we did the right thing. And in fact, I know we did the right thing. It was just, it was, it was kind of a costly way to go, and I'm glad we got the help that we got from our legislators and the public. So seeing us on the other side of that with much lower expenditures is, is, is something that I'm, I'm happy to see. I, I did want to bring attention to one line item and the use of one-time reserves for 2026, which was the body and fleet cameras at 189,575. And I was, you know, when we, when we did the Prop 1, and we helped Sheriff Sanders, you know, get that on the ballot and get it passed, I was, I was hoping that we wouldn't have to dip into reserves for, for police items in the, in the future. And I know that, you know, a good portion of that was designed for, for personnel usage. Will we get to a point where, with, with those dollars where we don't have to use reserves for, for, for that department? Or am I?
Right. That's certainly the goal, and that will be part of our, you know, strategy moving forward. And there, there are other items, as Chelsea pointed out, that we're using reserves in terms of operations. You could also consider the rapid response team within that category, too. So there's, there's a number of very important initiatives and programs that we have that are currently funded by reserves. You know, initially, I thought, you know, I think our approach was take it slow and see how things go and evolve, but these are all becoming permanent initiatives, you know, specifically to the body worn cameras and the, the fleet cameras. That was actually, you know, assumption on the budget side that those would be one-time capital purchases, and that's why they're funded by reserves. But we're actually using a lease program that allows us to keep the most up-to-date equipment always on hand. So, but that is definitely something that we're going to have to consider and shift in terms of that ongoing maintenance costs.
Just to, just to add on to that a little bit, that, that line item, you saw Deputy Mayor is, the remaining reserves are set aside for onboarding that program, and we're shifting those dollars onto our, our annual costs within the budget. So as we go forward, that will go off of reserves and be part of the, built into the annual budget.
Thank you.
Okay. There's nothing further. I will close this public hearing at 7:14. Thank you all very much. And we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is Resolution 1177. Chelsea?
Okay, thank you so much. So if it's acceptable to the council, I'd actually like to discuss the next two items together.
Please.
Okay. So those are Resolution 1177, which is authorizing the 2026 ad valorem tax increase, and Ordinance 1685, setting the 2026 property tax levies. So the revenue hearing that we had on November 3rd included a lot of detail about the discussion of property tax. So tonight, I'm just going to provide a brief overview, just as a reference point. So the 2026 general property tax is projected at $9,524,254. This is an increase from 2025 of $251,320, and that amount is made up of three different inputs. One is the 1% revenue limit in the amount of $92,729. This is that statutory limit that restricts property tax increase from going above 1% or the implicit price deflator, whichever is less. So this year, the implicit price deflator was 2.44, so our, our maximum amount that we can increase is that 1%. The second is new construction. The total amount of new construction is $51,465. This is outside of that 1% limit, so it's a total increase to property tax. And then third is the refund levy in the amount of $107,125. So those are specific to the general levy, but we also have the voter-approved geobond levy for the 2006 parks improvements that totals property tax collections of $364,000, and that's for 2026. The potential impact of both levies on a typical home in Lacey is around $7.36 for the year or 61 cents monthly. Actions requested of you tonight are two separate motions. So the first one is adopting Resolution 1177, which authorizes the 2026 property tax increase of 1%. And then second is the adoption of Ordinance 1685, which sets the 2026 general property tax levy at $9,524,254, and the voter-approved geobond levy at $364,000.
Move to adopt Resolution 1177, authorize the increase of the 2026 ad valorem tax levy by 1% over the tax levy of 2025.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing no opposition. I'm sorry? Is she still? Councilmember Cox, are you, I think, we think you're still there. Are you, we did not hear your vote, though.
I voted aye.
Thank you. Seeing there, seeing there were, everyone was in favor, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to the second part of the action that Chelsea's requested, if you could entertain a motion.
Move to adopt ad valorem tax ordinance number 1685.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any, any opposition? Seeing none.
Just clarifications, ordinance number 1686, just confirm with Councilmember Dunning that, that's the...
It's printed in two, two different numbers in two different places. 1685 or 1686? Did we already?
The ordinance is, actual ordinance is this, 1685.
I think it's 1685.
He did the resolution, and then we did the ordinance.
Disregard the evidence.
We're okay?
There is one more. It's coming up.
Okay. So that motion also carries unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to the next ordinance, which is Ordinance 1686 on the 2026 stormwater utility rates, and I will turn it back over to Troy.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Greenstein. Yes, for your consideration tonight is the ordinance that will establish stormwater rates for 2026. This really, in its simplest form, is a request, it's basically an inflationary rate increase. In terms of a little bit of history, the most recent stormwater comprehensive plan was adopted by the council back in November of 2020. This was a five-year plan that covered the years 2021 through 2025, and each one of those years had a 4.5% rate increase. The next update is underway, and we expect that comp plan to be completed in the second quarter of 2026. So we're in a little bit of a in-between comp plan studies. So again, this is a recommendation that the council increase rates by basically an inflationary factor of 4.5%. We do have increasing costs within the stormwater utility. During the, you know, the revenue hearing and a robust discussion on October 25th, we talked about the long list of new requirements under the operating permit for stormwater. So there are plenty of requirements that will end up costing this utility some more funds. So again, the recommendation is to increase rates by 4.5%. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I would move that we adopt Ordinance 1686, amending the Lacey Municipal Code 1370030, establishing stormwater rates for 2026 as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion. It's been seconded. Is there any discussion?
I just wanted to thank Troy and his team for, you know, really kind of showing us where we are in terms of, you know, how we fit in there with other cities and what they're charging. I, I sometimes look at some of these increases, and I think to myself, you know, right off top, no. But then I look at, you know, the budget presentation, and, and it really kind of makes it clear that, that we need these revenues and that we are not out of line with other cities our size and maybe even other cities that are bigger than us. So, so on one hand, when you look at it, you're, you're thinking to yourself, wow, 4.5%. And thanks, Chelsea, for, for pointing out that it's 61 cents per household or $7 a year on the ad valorem. But I, I, for, for the, for the level of service that we provide, I, I really have no problem with this, and I'm, I'm glad that we're, you know, only doing 4.5% because, you know, we've, we've had some capital outlays that have really kind of dipped into our reserves and, and, you know, as we look at kind of a, a little bit of a shortage, I, I think the, the finance department has just really done a great job of giving us a really close look at, at, at what it is that we're doing with these numbers and doing with these increases and making sure that we're not out of line or overstepping in charging the public.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I just, I just have a, a quick question. Why didn't we actually just use the inflationary number for, for next year instead of going with 4.5?
Well, I'll answer that more generically. I would say that the inflationary factor for local government is much different than what you're actually seeing in terms of the Bureau of Labor and Standards Department, especially in terms of construction. We've seen double-digit increases, annual increases in inflation for construction. This is a construction program that is going to start to ramp up in stormwater. So again, I think in short, our, our inflationary factor is definitely different than what you're seeing reported at the federal level.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Any other comments, questions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Seeing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. Next on our agenda is the mayor's report.
Sure. I just have one quick update. We had a member of our youth council who decided to resign because of other commitments. And so we actually did our, our work ahead of time when we did our interviews for the youth council, and we came up with, we had, we had more applications than we had people or positions to fill. So we came up with our, our first alternative if, just in case if anyone couldn't make it throughout the year or didn't accept it at the time. And so our, we went straight to that list, and our first alternative was Hyun Kim. And so it is my recommendation that we appoint Hyun Kim to the youth council for, to take up the, the vacancy that we currently have on that. Any a second?
I would second that motion. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Seeing no opposition, again, that motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. We are moving right on to the city manager's report.
Thank you. I have one item on the city manager's report, and that is a proposed bid award to the, develop the Grays' production well off of 21st Avenue Southeast. And I want to invite up Gaigan Braar, our utility engineer who's been managing this project, to give a brief presentation and overview of the project and the bids.
Good evening, honorable council members.
Good evening, honorable council members. Okay, just give me one sec. Okay, perfect. Good evening, council members. My name is Gaugan Braar. I am one of the utility engineers with the Public Works Water Resources Department. And today I'm in front of you to present the recommendation from staff. So staff recommends the award of contract. Staff recommends the award of contract PW two zero two four dash oh one, Source Six Water Rights Gray's Production Well. The low bidder is Holt Services, Inc. The project was advertised on October eighth, twenty twenty five, and the bids were opened on October, October twenty, twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. The low bid came out to be one million, one million, one thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty cents. The engineer's estimate was eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. There were, there was only one bidder for this bid opening, and the number of working days for this project is hundred and twenty days, hundred and twenty working days, and we are anticipated to begin the work on this project in or around March of next year. And this project is part of the overall ongoing improvements to ensure that the city perfects Source Six water rights that we have to meet our current and future, you know, water demand. The Source Six water rights that we currently have and we need to perfect are in the amounts of nine hundred and sixty-seven acre feet annually at the rate of six hundred GPM. And right now, we need to perfect these water rights by twenty thirty. This project entails drilling and developing a sixteen-inch diameter production well up to a depth of five hundred feet. This is a map showing where the proposed well site is going to be. And this is the property that we purchased recently, council. You, you're aware that we recently purchased this property. And I wanna, I wa- I would like to thank city attorney Dave Schneider for his tireless efforts in, you know, working with the Grays and negotiating the property purchase. So thank you, Dave. And so here, this slide, and this slide, I would just like to give you a brief history lesson, you know, fun, right? So just, just to make you aware of like the overall project, where it started and what has happened, you know, since the inception. I, I won't go too, too far back. So just to give you a quick recap, like in twenty eleven, we, Ecology issued a superseding permit, and that's when we had to, we had a deadline to develop this water right that we received from the superseding permit. We do have previous wells on site, Source Six, but we found out during that time that the capacity, the yield of this well is declining, and there was another failed attempt to drill a new well in twenty twelve. We also applied during that time, we applied for the permit, water right perfection, permit extension with Ecology. We successfully got that. Then we did some investigations to determine what's the, the best route to achieve this water right perfection. And during those investigations, we found out that if we, we, we found out that this parcel, on the previous slide that I showed, is the, is, is a really viable option and the quickest way to perfect this water right. And that's what began our negotiations with the Grays of doing some explor- explorations on their undeveloped parcel. And we did those explorations, and those were successful, and we found that we could use this parcel to potentially construct a production well. And then we went on to, with Dave's help, we went on to successfully purchase the property. It was, it was in May this year, and now we're at this stage where I'm in front of you for the project award for this production well that we're planning to drill in early next year. And then once we drill the production wells, we'll have, we'll move on to the next phase of this project, which would be involving wellhouses or well, wellhouse or a treatment facility, depending upon the water quality that we see. And with this slide, I just wanted to show you, we, that we have, we could have two options of well design, you know, under this project. We could have a shallow completion where we place the well screen around two hundred and fifty-five feet to three hundred feet. We could also, since we're going to five hundred feet deep, we could also have a deep, deep completion where we place the well screen anywhere from four hundred to five hundred feet. And we would determine the zone based upon, based upon the soil samples that our hydrogeologist analyzes. And then he's gonna recommend us, they're gonna recommend us what would be the best zone to put, to put the screens in for the well. And this is just a, it's a typical cable tool drill rig. This project only involves a cable tool drill rig. So thank you, and I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Mayor Ryder?
Yeah, so we, have we not done any exploratory drilling there to see where the water table is at? For some reason, I thought that was a part of our, our due diligence when, before we, as we were gonna buy the property, that mean it's obviously a much different price if it's a shallow well or if it's a, if it's a deep well. But I, I thought we had done some.
Yes.
Something to determine that.
We did the exploratory drilling in the previous project where we drilled two, two-inch monitoring wells. But, so with those exploratory drillings, we were able to see what, like where, where, what zones have, can produce water. But we would still need to do a full-scale production well and do some testing, well, pump, pump, do some water pump testing in order, in order to figure out where we would get the most water out of, which zone would be better. And the, the other benefit of doing a cable tool is it's the industry standard for any municipal water production well. So when, when we go, when we use a cable tool drill rig and, you know, go, we, we, we confirm those findings just to be more sure, since we need, we really need to perfect this water right. So that, that is the reason, even though we did those exploratory drillings, their main focus was to make sure this parcel is viable. But now with the production well with the cable tool, we would really know what the best zone is and how much water we can produce. And we believe both zones can produce the, the amount of water that we need to perfect the water right.
Okay, and then the other question I have is, I, I don't remember a time where we've only received one bidder where it's, it's been very, very few times over the, you know, sixteen years I've been on council. But is, is there a reason why we only received one, one bid on this?
Yeah, so the reasons, so there are, we believe there are two reasons. So the first reason, as you all know, this, we're still in the, the inflationary market conditions. And the second one, which may be a, a bigger one and may have more impact, is that cable tool drilling technique is really, is highly specialized. And during the development of this project, two of the three major cable tool drilling companies retired. And one of the, the existing cable tool company, the low bidder, they acquired the cable tool equipment from the, one of the retired companies. And there's a, there was a new company who acquired the other retired company's equipment, but they didn't have enough experience to drill large-scale municipal wells. So, so we believe these are the two primary reasons why we only got one bid.
So, so does that mean they're the, basically the only qualified contractor at this point that would be able to bid on these kinds of projects as we move forward here for, for wells?
Or at least the only local one.
Unfortunately, yes, but we did receive a lot of feedback from other drillers where we think now we have enough information to go back to the trying board and actually figure out a way to advertise these, these type of contracts in the future. And I think we, we are on a path on, of figuring out how to develop the, the future projects. We did receive a lot of feedback from the, from the drillers. And we have seen other jurisdictions slowly moving in another direction as well when it comes to drilling portable wells. But we're still in the figuring out stage. We still are going to receive a lot of information from our consultants and data and then really think about how, how can we move forward? Because no one wants, you know, just like no competition.
Yeah.
We want competition, so.
So I, oh, sorry, mayor, did you wanna?
No, yeah, it just, I'm just, it's very unusual to be, to be in this position where it seems like the competition knew that they're, they were the only competition. And it, it makes me feel a little hesitant. I understand that we're, you know, in a, in a somewhat of a time crunch to, to go forward on this. But it feels like, you know, being in a situation where you have no bidders besides, besides one puts us at a, a considerable disadvantage and not a hundred percent sure if it's the true low bidder out there or not. So, you know, I understand where we're at, you know, but, you know, it does show you we're, we're over on the estimated, you know, our engineer's estimate, which is just a, I understand, it's just a, you know, a, a possibility. It's, it's, it's never a diehard number for sure, but hopefully we can figure this out going forward because I, I don't know if I would be comfortable approving a, a future bid where it was just one, you know, one bidder going, going forward. So we, we need to figure this out.
If I could comment?
Please.
So Holt, the low bidder here, has been the low bidder on almost every drill job we've had. And there's never been any more than two bidders that I'm aware of. You know, I mean, what, even if they're qualified, given the low number of, of drillers that do this scale of work, you know, a lot of times they're so busy, they don't even put in a bid. This is a fairly competitive bid, and typically when Holt has had competition, their bids have been significantly under the other bidders. So, you know, this is a pretty good price. We understand your concerns about lack of competition and all, but it is worth moving forward on.
A question I had was about the timing. I remember when we were having conversations about purchasing the property and getting the easement from the Grays that there was pressure to get this done because the other well is declining. Can you remind us of like what the timing issue is?
Timing issue with the.
Is it just that the well's gonna stop working?
Perfecting the water right? Or are you asking about the existing Source Six well that, that was declining?
Is there an urgency to approving this contract?
Yes, there is, there is an urgency because by twenty thirty right now, we, we need to perfect this water right. And we're still in talks with Ecology in hopes that they, you know, see that the city is moving forward with these projects in order to achieve the perfection and hoping that they, they work with the city in order to, to give us another extension. But that's, that's still, yeah, not on paper yet.
Right, okay, thank you.
So there is an urgency, so sorry.
We can't, yes, we cannot delay moving forward with this well.
Anything further, any other questions or comments? No, in that case, I will ask for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Did we make a motion?
Did we not?
We had a motion?
I'm sorry, my mistake.
Move to award contract PW two zero two four oh one to low bidder Holt Services, Inc. in the amount of one million, one, or one million, one thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty cents as presented.
Second.
Thank you, yeah, it's much better to vote on a motion than to vote before we have one. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
I actually did have a question. Are, when, are, are the people who bid aware of how many other people are bidding?
Yes.
They're sealed, right?
Yeah, they're sealed bids. They don't know how many, you know, people are gonna bid. But, you know, obviously, this is a fairly small number of qualified bidders out there. So they know who their competition is and, you know, sometimes they talk.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on to council reports. Mayor, do you have any?
I'm up first, yeah, I'm up first, but I do not have a report.
Okay, deputy mayor?
Yeah, I do have one report. Joint Animal Services met on November thirteenth. We had a budget hearing. In that budget hearing, we, we kind of gave executive director some, some direction. And the, the two percent use of reserves that we had used last year, we wanted to remove that. And that's what city managers will see when, when they get the correspondence from the executive director. And then we had shelter statistics that are up year over year, in fact, thirty percent, almost thirty percent. So the total intake is up significantly for, for animal services. Of that intake, the county represents fifty-eight percent. Olympia is at twenty-one percent, Lacey's at fourteen, and Tom Waters at seven percent. Positive outcome, so adoptions so far this year are at fourteen hundred and ten. Adoptions by the end of Q three. For context, twenty twenty four had one thousand two hundred and twenty-six adoptions for the entire year. So number's up there, too. Field calls are up. Year-to-date, we're at twenty-nine hundred and thirty-three field calls. All of twenty twenty four resulted in two thousand.
Malcolm, we lost your audio. It looks like Zoom went down for everybody. Okay, we're, we're gonna take a short pause here while we try to get technology up and running. It looks like the Zoom issues, I got Wi-Fi on here. Looks like we are back on Zoom.
We lost you.
Yeah, that, that, the Joint Animal Services is pretty intense. See how we lose bandwidth?
It was quite the moment there, Malcolm, so yeah, please continue.
Okay, field calls up. Lacey's increase in field calls was a little over 11%. Tom Waters had a decrease. Olympia, I'm sorry, Tom Water had a 28% increase. Olympia had a little over half a point increase. And Thurston County had a 15.6% increase in field call. So field calls are up pretty much across the board. Trainings and certifications, officers are doing new trainings and certifications, Code Three certification. Northup and Baker attended a wildlife handling and got those certifications. The Executive Director has been nominated to another national board. This is her second, and so I think that's, I don't know if that's going to be her limit, but this one is the Associations of Animal Welfare and Advancement, which is a, so for a national board, it doesn't hold very many members, so it's, it's a pretty big, pretty big deal for, for us to be represented on that board. And Joint Animal Services, I don't know if you guys remember the Veach and Hamilton cruelty investigations that happened, something, somewhere around the number of 400 animals were, were part of that investigation. And Joint Animal Services has been granted custody of those, of those animals. So that, that was not necessarily part of the, the, the intake overall outcome, that the increase in intake overall, but it, it did play a small role because those were not dogs or cats. We will have one more budget hearing coming up this next month where we'll vote on the budget. It looks like the budget is being balanced by some reserves, not a lot. We are trying to limit the amount of reserves that we're using to balance the budget. Part of the reason why is because of the, the future capital outlay that we'll, that Joint Animal Services is looking at in acquiring a new facility. And that is my report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm up next and I have one short report. Thurston 911 Communications met on November 5th. And just, just a couple of things of note, we got our third quarter numbers for revenue and expense, really in good, in a very good place. The revenue is above expectation and expenses are below, so things are doing well there. The construction on the final radio transmission site, which is in Dupont, is actually complete, something we've been waiting for, for a couple of years now. We should actually have power at that location in about the next two weeks or so as the power company brings power to the location. So that'll be a, a big help to the radio system and give us that final location that we need. And we are in the process right now of our final training academy. Once this academy is complete, we should be actually fully staffed for the first time in several years. So it's, it's been a, a long battle to get there, but the staff has done an amazingly good job of getting that completely staffed up. So that is my report. Councilmember Cox?
Hello, I have one report out of the Thurston Regional Housing Council, which met on November 12th. We heard a report from Jackie Bolasko from the county's housing staff about the final draft of the 2025-2030 homeless response plan. She gave us an overview of public feedback received about the plan, which she said was mostly positive about the priorities and activities for the next five years. They did incorporate some changes as the result of public response and the Housing Council voted unanimously to recommend that the County Commission adopt the plan. We also looked at legislative priorities. We are, first is to maintain funding of the following Thurston County projects that were allocated funding in 2025. The encampment resolution program, the Maple Court conversion to permanent supportive housing, and the Boulevard Road project with Habitat for Humanity. The second priority is supporting an amendment to clarify the Residential Landlord-Tenant Act regarding rules around enhanced shelters and tiny home villages. And finally, to support the Connecting Housing to Infrastructure Program, otherwise known as CHIP. And then finally, we did some wrap-up work on vision, mission, values, and next steps. And then my only other report is more of a preview of tomorrow night's intercity transit meeting. We've had numerous times when the planned system overhaul that is to take place in early May can be heard. Right now, the process part of it is they are working on, or we are working on a required report that shows that we are being equitable in serving particularly underserved populations that, that our routes will cover those to the greatest extent possible. And so that's what the hearings are about now, but the public will still have a number of opportunities to review the upcoming changes, to comment on them. And I believe, starting now, you can go to the intercity transit website and start checking out some, at least some of the planned route changes. And in future, I think they'll start having more detailed information on there. That's my report.
Thank you. Robin?
Good evening, I have one report, and it is about our Thurston Regional Planning Council meeting. So I've been keeping the whole town updated on what's been going on with the Thurston Regional Planning Council since Mark Daly left in June of this year. And during our council meeting last Friday, instead of having, you know, a two and a half hour meeting, we had something more like a seven hour meeting because a large part of the meeting was devoted to executive session wherein we interviewed the last, the, the three finalists for the position of Executive Director of the Thurston Regional Planning Council. And after a very competitive recruitment, we selected Alyssa Gertler for the Executive Director position for TRPC. So we now have our next Executive Director, who will be joining us and will officially start with TRPC on December 5th. That also happens to be the date of the next Thurston Regional Planning Council meeting, so she will, she will join us for her first meeting, which is also her very first day of work. So that's, that was exciting news that she was able to start so early. She currently lives in Oregon, but she's planning on relocating up here to Washington, and she will be kind of hybrid working between now and when she's able to fully relocate into Thurston County. The only other reports are that we reviewed the, the annual work plan for 2026 for TRPC, and there are a host of initiatives. Even though some of our access to federal funding and local funding is uncertain, TRPC has a lot of work scheduled for next year, so there'll be more coming out about that. And at our upcoming meeting, in addition to welcoming Alyssa, we will also be hearing an update on the Martinway Corridor Strategy, which is definitely of interest to folks in Lacey, so more to come on that. And that's my report.
Thank you. Okay, Nick?
Well, to stay on the hiring of directors train, the VCB met today and selected Shawna Stewart to be the new interim director for the VCB to help transition us for the next six, nine months into the hiring of a new full-time, permanent, or, you know, for as long as possible, director. So she obviously has a lot of experience having worked with the organization before, a lot of networking there, so hopefully that'll make things pretty smooth and, and get us going in the right direction. And that's my report.
Great, thank you. That brings us to the end of our regular meeting. We are going to recess for 10, 10 minutes, I guess, till 8:05, and we will resume at the back table for a work session at that time. Thank you.[1198.88]
Yeah.
You should just be able to share just like you're on Zoom here. Long as you relax.
No, good Rick?
Think we're ready to roll.
All right, then we will, as we said, it's eight oh five and we will resume our city council meeting.
Thank you, council member. And the work session item, our first topic is the water meter replacement project. And as councils aware, we've had a couple, several conversations about planning for this project. We have approximately 10,000 meters in our system that are due for replacement. And about 3,000 of those are having, approximately 3,000 of those are having issues with transmitting their data. So they're, you know, subject to manual reads and estimation. In the past, we have been working on periodically trying to replace those meters with existing staffing. But we've gotten to the point with workload and demands related to our utility building program, as well as replacement, that we really need to take a look at a more deliberate and focused effort to get those meters replaced to help out with the day-to-day operations and efficiencies. So I asked our, our public works team to start looking at what are some options we can do to kind of focus a deliberate effort to make those replacements. And they went in and took out three options. One was to use our existing, the company that provides our meters as a sole contractor. A second option was to look at an independent contractor that would work with us and the Clara. And then a third was doing a version of in-house possible, adding staff resources. So tonight, Scott Devlin can lead off the presentation. We have Vince as well as Scott here to add some more details and respond to questions. But they're going to go through those options and our recommendation. Ultimately, with the timing of the current budget for 2026, what we're looking for tonight is just for consensus heading on that we're on the right track in terms of going forward with this plan. And when if council is supportive of this effort, then we'll incorporate it into the 2026 adoption. So with that, I want to turn over to Scott to kind of give an overview of that program and the options we looked at and our recommended options for council to consider.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, council, for hearing us out tonight. And I'm Scott Devlin, Public Works Operations Manager. It was tasked by Rick as one of the team members to come up with a great solution to get this meter issue resolved. I've talked a little bit of history, Rick has covered most of the reason on the first couple of slides. So, but I will touch on a few things. So as he mentioned, there's around 10,000 water meters that are either beyond their lifespan or not working properly currently right now. There's, as of this morning, there was 1,906 MTUs, meter transmission units that were not transmitting. That is kind of the key marker that we've looked at in the past. We had at one time over 3,000, about 35 to 3,800, as you remember probably from the past, and about 500 of these MTUs failing every single month. Currently, we're, we're right around the 100 per month is the failure rate. So that has drastically been reduced over time since 2022. We'll get into that in a minute. So this failures mean that we're right at 8% of all of Lacy's meters are not sending, sending any data and they're all being manually read either a monthly or bi-monthly basis.
So just to say there's 28,000 customers or 28,000 meters.
Sure.
So 10,000 is more than a third.
All right. So our response back in 2022 was we hired three AMI technicians, automated meter infrastructure technicians, to go out and assist with this meter replacement project, knowing that we were having those 500 failures every single month and over 3,000 meters that needed to be replaced at that moment. The current approach kept up with pace of failures that we had, but didn't really get us ahead. So now we're three years into this process. Like we talked about the numbers, 2,000 more are currently in failure or have failed. 10,000 more need to be replaced. So it has slowed it down a little bit. It has helped out a ton. And so we were told, hey, please get this accomplished and get this done quicker. So that's what we decided to do. So our, let's see, options. So we looked at three different options, basically. One was hiring a Clara, which is our MTU and software provider, to go ahead and we would contract them out to do all the work, to come in, hammer out all the meters, the MTUs, take care of everything. It would take them about one year. And that was about a $4.3 million contract at that point, as they gave us a bid. With other option was a Clara has told us, they said, you can use our subcontractors. So we could actually run that ourselves with their subcontractors for a price of about $3.9 million. There are some issues with that and what that really is, is we have to still manage a lot of this that happens. There's a lot of help that these companies need from us internally for, for admin staff and for field staff to go out whenever they run into an issue or problem with a, with a meter box, tree, whatever that might look like, that they'll call us out on a regular basis. So we will be involved with this process if we hire a contractor to do it. And so the last, last thing we looked at was just doing this in-house. So hiring a couple more two-year LTEs, AMI techs that would report down to operations. And all they would do is just install meters every single day. We would also assist by going ahead of them with like a vector unit and sucking out the boxes, cleaning up ahead of them so they could do their job much, much faster. And we have some staff on board that are very technical savvy. They can do this pretty quickly too. So when we do have some little downtime, some of our guys can help out. So we currently manage all meters one inch and larger at the shop. So let's keep that in mind. And so this would cost about $1.2 million for hiring three FTEs and the equipment, not including the meters or the MTUs. We currently have a big supply of MTUs, I think it was 3,000 MTUs and 6,000 meters on site. We just placed another order for additional meters and MTUs. So we'll have all, well, a lot of them that we need. One thing I did want to touch on here when we're talking about the meters too, is the AMI techs that we did hire back in 2022 have more than just a meter replacement job. And so what they do is they go out and they do manual reads, which takes them at least one week out of the month that they're doing manual reads. They go back out and they do shut offs. So they have one week of shut offs, turn ons that they do. And they also do all the meter installs of five-inch meters, new drops for new services. That takes some time also. So if you break that really down, they only have, you know, a week and a half, a month to really concentrate on catching up with this problem. So what we recommend doing is hiring two limited-term LTEs, AMI technicians to report to the shop, and one two-year LTE for admin help for utility billing. That's really what, what we think we can do, get this knocked out pretty quickly as far as the 1,900 failures that we currently have. And then looking at about another 8,000 AMCO meters that do not match up to those MTUs. The decoder register doesn't work with the new style MTUs. And so we have to replace the meter and the MTU together for those other 8,000. Another thing to keep in mind is long-term on this entire plan is we don't want to get into this again. So what happened originally in 2006-ish was we just installed all of them at once. And so we had this mass failure where they all failed at one time. And so what we want to do is just have a plan in place where we are actually going out replacing meters and MTUs before they fail and having that over a long-term process program that's been programmed into a, you know, long-term maintenance, maintenance program. That being said, just to keep in mind that MTUs are rated for around a 15-year life. And so 2006, 2021 is 15 years, right? We're past that on a lot of these. And then a meter replacement by standard is about 20 years. And what happens on the meters is it just starts reading low. And so we're not reading the right amount of water usage, which causes a couple of different problems. One, we have to report anything larger than a 10% loss in our entire water system to the EPA. And then another thing is we're undercharging customers at that time. So the revenue's lost.
Do you want questions as you go?
Actually, I'm done with my part of the presentation. So you can ask questions now.
Anybody, any questions first? Go ahead.
I think you might've said it, but it went past me because it's late. How many meters do we think that two techs can replace? If we, you know, we have, we're going to hire a limited duration employees for two years. Do we think that we will be able to replace all of the meters that need replacing?
Yeah. So I do have a calculator that we did on this and I don't remember the numbers exactly. Our initial calculations were, we wanted to under-promise and over-deliver. So we, we shot at eight meters a day per employee.
Conservative estimate.
Conservative estimate, 20 days a month times all of that. And so we were looking at about a year and a, year and three quarters to get all of them done. Yeah.
And dependent on the current two limited term, they have limited, there are other duties that as Scott went through there and maybe a week and a half of the month, they also can still help support some of this work, but at least we have two, two positions that are dedicated to it.
Fully dedicated.
Mayor Ryder?
Yeah, a couple of questions. So, you know, the original plan was that we were going to hire these limited-term employees who were going to do reader meeting and obviously replace meters as they go. Obviously, it doesn't sound like we've been able to keep up with the demand. How many water meters have, and MTUs have we replaced since we implemented that in 2022?
That was a great question.
Troy, my, Troy.
This is a bit of a guess, Mayor Ryder, but it's probably less than 5,000 and that's mostly on the MTU side, not the full meter replacement. So just the sending unit itself, we've been replacing at a pretty, pretty good pace as, as we've been able to.
Okay. And then the obvious question here is how we're going to pay for these temporary employees for the next two years? This is, we're going to, we're going to, obviously have this go back into our budget. So what, what's the revenue source that we're going to use to, to cover the cost?
I'll take that one again. Good, great question. The, the current comp plan for water included about $7.4 million for basically a complete replacement of the system. So again, 7.4 was built into the rate recommendation for this, for this period. I think the original capital improvement program had this scheduled for 2023 or 2024. So in terms of cash flow, it's there. We've spent probably about $3.5 million or so in supplies. So the meter inventory as well as the sending units. We're still going to have inventory to purchase. So again, we spent about three, three and a half. We probably have another million and a half, I would say, in inventory. And then, you know, the 1.2 million. So we're actually, all that added together, we're still less than that 7.4 million that was assumed by the revenue requirement.
Well, I'm, I'm reciting in favor of this, actually. I've been one of the people who've been pushing our city manager to come up with a solution because it, it never made sense to me to, to begin with that we hired, you know, some temporary people to read meters when we know that they need to be replaced. And so, I mean, there's just, there's just no way we could possibly read 3,000 meters, you know, plus ongoing failing meters every month. There's just no way we'd keep up with that demand. It's, it's impossible. So, you know, we've had a lot of kind of upset utility customers along the way because we haven't been very accurate, you know, with our utility readings. It's just impossible to do. So I'm, you know, I definitely support coming up with a permanent solution and a, a plan to figure out how we don't, you know, we're not in this mess going forward. So, you know, I 100% support the, the solution. I think it's long overdue. It's probably, we probably waited too long to, to get here, to tell you the truth. So, you know, I think the sooner the better that we can replace these and come up with a, a long-term plan, the better.
I have one, one additional question to get to your next, Nick. So I, I support this idea and I think obviously it's far less expensive for us to hire the people and that's a pretty obvious, easy decision. My, my one concern is over all the years I've been on council, which is 14 now, so a long time, every time we've ever hired a temporary term, a limited-term employee, they've always become permanent employees. Every single time that I can think of, I don't know of ever that we've actually hired a limited-term employee who actually left at the end of that term. So that is, that's my one concern. And again, I get this is, we're hiring them for a specific project. Is the, I mean, is it fully the intention that at the end of the two-year term? Now again, obviously they could apply for other positions if a position's open or something. But this is a two-year position that will end in two years?
That's, that's, that's the intention. This is a project-specific role. And so it's tied to the project. You're right. Over the last four, five years, started using the, the limited-term employee to bring on folks to refund them through reserves with the idea we didn't know if the revenue would be there and the need. Some of those positions have stayed on because we did, were able to absorb them into that and the need was there.
Right. And most of them were, I mean, in fairness, they were hired to be permanent, really. We used, we hired them as temporary because we were using reserves.
Because we weren't sure where things were going and then we wanted to have any false expectations for the.
They were meeting a permanent need.
But we also had other limited-term employees that we did not see the need and we, we let go of those, those terms. So very few, but there, there were a couple. But in this case, this is project-specific because we're looking at specific set of reserve dollars that make this project happen and how we can best do that. Where we're fiscally responsible, but also being efficient and getting the project done.
So another consideration is that for quite a few years, especially through the COVID years, utility billing was tapping operations to help out. So like Zach Ruff, who's a senior tech who runs a construction crew in water. Yeah, his crew was, they're doing reads, they're doing replacements, they're doing things they don't typically do to help out. It worked out over the COVID time because we had supply chain issues and, you know, so it kind of, it worked out. But, but yeah, when these actual employees came on board, you know, then we got our public works employees back to do the work they were supposed to do. So there was a little bit of horse trading going on there, you know. So, so yeah, the, those LTEs that came in, or, or I mean, those AMI techs that came in. Yeah, like Scott mentioned, a lot of their time has been spent triaging stuff, you know, going out and doing manual reads and all this that, that, you know, when this process is taken, you know, is completed, that should be very minimal. And as Scott mentioned, yeah, then there should be a, a kind of an asset management program in place to, to replace these meters on a schedule that we don't end up with this huge failure rate.
Thank you. Nick?
There's two things. One, if my meter's reading low, you can hold off till the end to remove that one. I'll sacrifice. But two, I think, you know, obviously we have this upfront cost. I think one, one thing that would help is if, if at some point we could get a projection of like the long-term savings from not having, you know, people constantly going out and having to, to read these and kind of show that this fiscally makes a lot of long-term sense. So if that is something that could get put together, it would be great to see.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can pull together some, some projections. And again, it's, it's one of those pieces where some of that savings is being able to refocus the work we have instead of trying to manually read that we have the automated system. So they're actually going out and, and doing the other work that we need to do in terms of supporting the meters and the, and the utility customers. But we're looking to see what we can do to kind of show that.
I assume it takes quite a bit of time to, there are many, yeah.
Yeah, one, one comment, just would like everybody to appreciate that complexity here. One time I asked, in terms of asset management, Scott Spence said, gee, I wish we'd done, set this up kind of like our, you know, our LED conversion.
Rotation.
And where, you know, they're, but I told Scott, you know, that this meter, you know, replacement is a much more complicated system. Converting high-pressure sodium to LED lights, high-pressure sodium bulb burns out. You replace the head, you know, you, there's, but, so there's one component. Here you have, as Scott said, you have the, you have the MTUs that transmit data. You have the DCUs that, that take it and repeat it. And then you have softwares too. And those all have different lifespans. And so, yeah, it's a little bit more complex of an asset management replacement program than something as simple as.
Let's see, how does the technology change if we're replacing every, you know, the, you know, a few thousand every year? What's the technology change, you know, over the course of 15 years? Probably quite a bit.
And that's one of the reasons too, and thank you for that, Scott, because you were talking about the meter replacement of employees that come on, but we also have to bring them and make sure we emphasize, and Scott mentioned it, the, the data entry at the back room. We'd have to have that other temporary employee to be able to input the data. So as they place the meter, they put the, they put that information and it has to be inputted in our software system so that it has the right place to read and we have the right client, you know, customer and all that type of stuff. So there's a lot of nuances and complexities to this. So it's not just dropping a new meter and fixing up some plumbing repairs. It's also making sure everything's calibrated, located the right thing and reading correctly into the system. So we have to have that other, that third employee to do just that and focus on that.
To speak to your point though, Lenny, is, is the fact is we don't know 100% yet. And to speak to your point though, Lenny, is, is the fact is, we don't know 100% yet what we're going to look like in two years from now. We need to reevaluate and see, are the three current AMI techs enough to go out and, and make the replacements of, say, 2,000 meters and MTUs a year to keep up with this? What doesn't happen again? Does it take a, another person, a third person? We have to evaluate all of that.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, a quick, just a quick question, just for curiosity's sake. How many meters did, you know, there, our guys were able to read in, in the week that we allocated them to read all the manual meters that need to be read? I mean, out of 3,000, how, how many could they possibly get to in, in a, in the time allotted in a month?
It's probably about half of that. So we do estimate from time to time. So Lacey municipal code allows us to estimate no more than two months in a row. So that's, I think you alluded to that a little bit in terms of accuracy of reads. We're estimating and then we have a reconciliation in that second month when we actually do get the read. But yeah, we're not able to read, read 3,000 per month.
Yeah, that's, and that's why it's so important that we actually come up with a, a solution here because it can be drastically different, especially in the end, end of the summer where, you know, at different times, irrigation is considerably different for different homes, you know. And so I think it's really important that we, we actually come up with a long-term solution and, and not to, not rely on these estimated. Because the other thing that we see is, you know, what happens is a lot of these meters, at the end of life, they're just not reading very accurately. And then we put a new meter in that reads a lot more accurately and all of a sudden you're that, that, you realize you're actually consuming a, a lot more gallons than the, the meter was actually showing. So there's a big jump and, you know, possible jump and our, our utility payers, you know, bill. And we have a lot of explaining to do, try to figure this out. And that's really why, I think one of the biggest reasons why we've seen the amount of complaints that we've seen, especially over this last several years, is there's been a quite a discrepancy that's going on. And so this, this is root, you know, one of the reasons why I've, I've told our city manager, we have to, we have to figure this out because we just, the amount of complaints that we've been receiving has been somewhat unprecedented, but it's directly relates to, you know, this issue. And so I'm, I'm glad that we're here and we have a solution and hopefully we can, you know, we can replace those as soon as possible.
I think, I know the answer to this question, but I'll ask it anyway. The limited term employees, do they receive benefits, medical coverage, retirement credits? Because they work full-time, right? They have to be eligible for those things.
They're treated like a regular full-time permanent employee?
I think that's just important for us to be aware of is even though they are, when we bring them on, we say, your contract is for two years and we can't promise you employment past two years because of the funding. But while they're with us, we treat them like a regular employee and they're covered with like healthcare benefits and retirement benefits.
Totally, yes.
Thank you.
You can proceed.
So I'm, I'm sensing, I'm sensing that the council is okay with us moving forward with this project and bring this forward for formal approval in a, in a future budget amendment in 2026.
Thank you for coming up with a cheaper solution.
Yeah, I think everyone's on the same page here.
Got a thumbs up from Councilor Carr.
So, when, when do you think this budget amendment will be before us?
I'm looking at Troy, we can probably do something.
Yeah, we could do it anytime. As you know, the authorization of a program and the budget don't always reconcile. It's really looking at what appropriation levels we have, but we could certainly come back early in 2026 as we kind of refine exactly what costs might be in terms of market analysis, that type of thing.
Yeah, I, I think we should do it as, as soon as possible. I, I don't want the budget authorization be the thing that's holding us back from getting some progress made on, on this because we have a lot of catching up to do. And so we know this isn't, you know.
So we'll, sorry, I didn't mean to interject, but we'll set something up and get a schedule set in early 2026 to bring this forward to council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Moving on to the last item on our agenda, the 2026 lodging tax funding recommendations.
We'll kick it over to Sadie and Sharon.
An enviable position on the agenda. It seemed to always end up for a.
Do actually.
Request the last.
To see how well we can cover so much information in a reasonable amount of time.
Pressure prompted, I like that.
Exactly. Good evening, Council, I'm Sadie Siglin, Management Analyst. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the 2026 lodging tax recommendations. Tonight we'll do a brief review of lodging tax, some changes to the lodging tax funding review and selection process, and then go over the current funding status and the recommendations from the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for the 2026 cycle. Starting off with our lodging tax review, as this council learned in their brief LTAC 101 review, lodging tax funds are statutorily imposed and regulated by Washington state law. Those are limited-use funds that can be used for tourism marketing, special events and festivals, and operations of capital and capital expenditures of tourism-related facilities that meet the qualifications for lodging tax use. The lodging tax application and award process is unique compared to some funding that the city gives out in the community. First, this goes through the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and the committee has a very narrow scope when reviewing these applications. They can only consider applicants who apply during the open application cycle and their consideration is specifically for activities and what's included in the lodging tax application. So some activities also come to this council for other considerations. This committee only reviews the components that are as part of the lodging tax application, so a much narrower scope. After the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee reviews those applicants, they send recommendations to the Lacey City Council and the council reviews those recommendations. Council is not required to fund the full list of recommendations from the committee, but they may not award funds to recipients that were not recommended by the committee. There is the option for a review where this council could send a list back to the committee for potential modification if there is discrepancies or disagreement with the amounts awarded. And that requires 45 days for the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee to review and then that waiting period before the council can take action. So this year, there were some changes to the funding review process. In September, this council elected to change the lodging tax approval process. Historically, this has been approved and rolled into the budget cycle. And so now the budget will proceed with its normal review by council, but the individual dispersment of lodging tax funds and awards will be reviewed separate from the budget process. So this council has the opportunity to look in more detail at the recommendations. During the October 14th council session, you all reviewed again that kind of lodging tax 101 overview on the current process that the committee has been following. And this council did make some recommendations to change that process. In the short term, this council wanted to prioritize that the committee direct more funding to the RAC, that they specifically look at applicants who have activities that are located in Lacey and the urban growth area and that they prioritize looking at applicants who have the highest potential for paid overnight stays because paid overnight stays are what generate more lodging tax and community investment. In the long term, this council will continue to discuss lodging tax priorities and any potential funding recommendations and allocations. During the 2026 funding cycle review, this year the committee did make some guidelines and changed to have more meaningful award values and maximize impact with the awards that they recommend for applicants. One of these guidelines included allowing preparatory event expenses. Lodging tax funds are given to applicants on a reimbursement basis only and some of the feedback our recipients gave the committee was that it's very hard to pay for marketing to host the events and activities without this funding upfront. So the committee elected to allow marketing-specific expenses to be reimbursed or advance paid to the recipients up to 40% before the activities occur. Additionally, the committee looked at not issuing awards less than $5,000 just to offset those administrative costs in the burden that goes to the applicants. Neither of these guidelines have any impact on award funding amounts or distribution. This is more of an administrative impact that will maximize the value of the awards. Other guidelines that this committee reviewed this year were implementing location-based thresholds and allowing use of lodging tax funds for administrative expenses. Based on the feedback from council during their review, we did recommend that the committee reconsider these guidelines to be more in line with the council's direction to prioritize funding for the RAC and funding for activities inside of Lacey. Up here we do have the current anticipated timeline for the funding cycle. So today this council is reviewing the recommendations from the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee and looking toward having council action on recommendations hopefully in December of 2025, so next month. And pending any council action, we would be able to issue agreements to award recipients in January of 2026. Moving forward with a funding overview, this is a historical look at how lodging tax funds have been distributed historically. Up here in the light green, this is just a breakout of city-driven awards versus community-driven awards. So the city does apply and has historically received funding for activities and facilities that promote tourism. You can see over time, we have had a significant increase in the number of awards that the committee has issued, although there has not been a significant increase necessarily in the amount of funding granted, with the exception of 2023 where the committee recommended and this council approved an award to the Washington Center for a one-time facility improvement that was derived from reserves for the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. But across the board, you can see we have a pretty consistent award amount that's issued, but we have over time dramatically increased the number of awards that we have issued. Recap so far of the 2025 funding cycle. These funding cycles do run January through December, so there are still currently events that are anticipated to occur. All of this funding has not been expended, but you can see for this funding cycle, we issued 29 awards and roughly $600,000. Through October 31st, we have reimbursed $269,727,000 in those funds, noting that funding awarded for the RAC in the Lacey Museum, which are City of Lacey internal applications, are expensed at the end of the year with a one-time transfer of finance. Of the reported overnight stays so far this year, there have been 4,837 reported paid overnight stays by activities funded with lodging tax, which is a pretty incredible amount of tourism impact in the city. We do anticipate that we will have a little over $21,000 in unused funds from awards that were granted to be distributed just based on activities that maybe have been canceled or came in under budget as proposed previously.
Is that, is that pretty common here up here, where some unspent money?
Yeah, I would say the variety of reasons, whether they just don't have qualifying expenses or activities get canceled, especially, especially during that kind of COVID period, obviously. And the few years following, activities and participation just have been harder and some of our applicants have found it's difficult to maintain some of those long-term events. So it's pretty common.
And the funding just rolls over into the next year, right?
Yeah, because it's restricted funds, we can't redirect it once that cycle goes through. So we do anticipate a little extra after this term. So what we do have now is a review of the current recommendations from the committee. Looking up here, we do have a side-by-side comparison of the 2025 cycle and the 2026 cycle. So we did just have two less applications, but as you can see, our funding requests dollar-wise actually increased even though we had a decreased amount of applicants. We did have slightly more projected revenue this year than in 2025. Noting though, since the start of kind of the lodging tax season, which our committee begins in September, we did have a slight decrease, roughly $10,000, and that's in interest earnings. So those numbers did change during the review cycle and that was something that the committee had to make adjustments for. So based on the applicants and the amount requested versus the annual revenue projections, there is a gap of $389,000 that the committee had to review and consider when balancing and making decisions regarding the funding. And then you can see over here, just a breakout of the type of applications. Again, in those three primary categories that can be funded with lodging tax revenues, we have the special events and festivals, tourism-related facilities, and then the tourism marketing. You can see the marketing is significantly smaller dollars asked for and that's just simply because of the nature of marketing activities, we have fewer applicants in that category.
A hundred thousand of that is dedicated to the VCV, isn't it?
Yeah, historically, the VCV has been one of the only marketing previously. The Lacey Chamber has been an applicant in the marketing category. They have changed to apply as a tourism-related facility in the last two years. So those marketing categories have shifted slightly, but the number of applicants is significantly smaller just due to the nature of the deliverable services. What I do have up here is a current review of the lodging tax recommendations. I do have some supplemental information to provide so I'd recommend we look at this and then review the information and then this council, I will have this information in another slide to review in more detail, line by line. But this is the recommendations by the committee once they did the application review cycle. Everything highlighted in blue are City of Lady C applications. So these are from internal, as you can see, the Parks Department has three activities that they submitted applications for. The total recommendation for funding is $685,000 with $108,000 recommended to be used from reserves, which we will review. I did want to point out that in the staff report, there is a Table A attached that does include some more information specifically about the overnight stays and the budget asks of each application. And noting in there, there is a column that covers reported stays from 2024. Again, 2025 is a current cycle, so we don't have the complete data and that is why there is a slight year delay for that information. One of the things we wanted to highlight in this is that the committee's recommendation did include increased funding for the RAC at the direction of this committee. So the RAC recommendation for funding is $326,000. This includes redirecting $57,000 that the committee has historically funded other city events for. So the committee reviewed that and took the option to not fund events they had historically and push that money to the RAC specifically to increase that funding. Also, this committee had previously looked at implementing administrative expenses for the city out of lodging tax funds to align with the council's direction to increase RAC funding. They elected instead of doing that to put that $28,000 toward the RAC, noting that was a piloted recommendation. So this would be the first year that they had done that and this, again, shifted that toward the RAC. Within the general revenues before the use of reserves, there was a remaining $13,700 roughly that the committee also redirected toward the recommendation for funding the RAC. Historically, the RAC has been funded by lodging tax dollars at $180,000 and that's been pretty consistent for years past. The potential impact of this recommendation would alleviate $98,000 roughly from the general fund by redirecting and reallocating lodging tax funds toward the RAC that would historically go to other things. that would historically go to other things. Also, you can see here, consistent with the council's recommendation to prioritize estimated paid stays, the RAC represents ten thousand, oh, paid overnight stays estimated for two thousand and twenty-six. All other applications total equal twenty-three thousand nine hundred. So they are the primary producer and estimated paid overnight stays for the LTAC applicants.
Now, I would say in, in speaking to the hoteliers in Lacey, which this has been a couple of years now, but consistently, every one of them that I've spoken to has said that the RAC is the number-one driver of heads and beds, next to the military, which obviously is not funded with LTAC. So I mean, funding more money to the RAC makes perfect sense for LTAC dollars because it actually does what it, what LTAC money is, is designed to do, put heads in beds. I, I gotta tell you, I struggle with this and I've struggled with it for years because I honestly don't believe that many of the things that we fund actually put heads in beds. So there's several things on here that I really struggle with.
I'm wondering where there's twenty-four thousand other recommend, you know? Who, where are those numbers coming from?
Yeah, and, and there's things here that I fully support, that the cities, I want us to support, right? I just don't know that lodging tax is the right place to do it. I'll give you an example, the Makerspace. Huge supporter of the Makerspace, like, fully support us funding the Makerspace. How that justifies LTAC money, that's a stretch for me. I, I don't believe that that puts heads in beds. And I can tell you frankly that I, I will wind up being a no vote on this, not because of that, but simply for the, for the one that I cannot get my head around, which is the eighty thousand dollars for the FIFA Fun Zone, Fan Zone, that I don't believe will be successful. I don't believe will put a single head in the bed in, in the City of Lacey and I think is an absolute misuse of Lacey money, considering that event is not happening in Lacey. And we specifically said in our priorities that we wanted nothing over, I think it was twenty-five thousand was the limit we put on things outside of Lacey, but here we're putting eighty thousand dollars to something that's not in Lacey. That makes me a no vote, so I'm just.
And a, a few great points, one being, you know, the RAC is unique in nature too. As the committee consistently sees, a lot of our other applicants actually host their activities at the RAC. So you have a great, Councilmember Greenstein, that they do drive a lot of heads and beds, the nature of their facility and that some of the other applicants also host activities there. Makes it a really good representation and fit for tourism-driven dollars. I did want to clarify, the cap for twenty-five thousand dollars for location-based thresholds was something the committee wanted to pilot this year when considering applications and was something that they elected kind of to direct away from, to be consistent with this council's direction to focus on things in Lacey, like you mentioned. So noting that, I would recommend we have a, a couple other items to review and then there's the opportunity to kind of go line by line if this council's okay. Councilmember Vasquez, did you have a question?
Maybe I can just wait until we do the line-by-line adventure.
Okay.
One, uh, just quick comment, um, Councilmember, I believe you asked a question about the estimated paid stays and what the other twenty-four thousand were, so if you want to address that, Sadie?
Yes, so the other twenty-four thousand, these are estimates that the applicants include with their applications only, right? So, and there are a variable degree in way of, that people derive these estimates. In the last few years, uh, one of our lodging tax recipients has been the VCB and one of the services they have offered when funded is to provide geofencing to other lodging tax applicants. So applicants who kind of have a history and took advantage of that last year do have a different dataset to provide those paid overnight stays estimates, where some activities who maybe didn't receive previous funding or who opted not to use that information estimate in different methods. Some of that includes clicker counts for previous sales, some of that includes online e-ticket sales. So that is one thing that we have seen a change in over time too, is those estimates and as new options for tracking such as geofencing come on board, those numbers get more consistent. But there is definitely a large variance depending on how they source that. Also, the nature of activities, there are several activities which we refer to as multi-occurrence activities. Things like facilities who are open year-round are multi-occurrence, so they have a greater number of having paid overnight stays as opposed to an event that maybe takes it currents one single day. So we do have applicants who have multi-occurrence activities, whether that be a week-long of events or maybe every weekend or seasons and things like that. So the number you will see and that is included in that Table A, you can see those estimated paid stays. Some of them have a much greater number and that's because their activities occur over six, seven months and all weekend long, so. The number.
Correlation causation here, I think, is, I'm very skeptical of, of those, of that reported number, yeah.
And I think one thing to recognize too is, you know, a, a, another third of this pie of all, of the all recommendations, um, that includes advertisement, which would be for some of the events that may be held in Lacey at, at the RAC, for example. So just recognize, um, that is part of that twenty-four thousand in there.
Any other questions about this slide? So next, we did just want to touch on recommendations and things that were not recommended for funding. There were nine applications overall that the committee reviewed and elected not to recommend funding for, whether it be because the activities were not located in Lacey or they had a very low potential for paid overnight stays, as this committee just discussed. Some activities really are valuable to our community, but don't necessarily drive the overnight stays, which is the root reason and purpose of lodging tax funding. So also, again, not being aligned with that intended funding, this committee has identified some applications that they feel maybe would be better aligned for other funding opportunities in the city. I did want to highlight here that there are three activities that are City of Lacey applications who have historically been funded by lodging tax funds that the committee elected not to recommend funding for this year just because, again, they didn't align with those recommendations from council or they felt that they could in, receive money in other ways. Those three activities are hosted by the city's Parks Department and are not anticipated to be impacted in operations at all by not receiving funding from lodging tax. So moving, if this council moved forward with the recommendations as is, those activities are still anticipated to occur in full scope and capacity regardless of this council's decision. So looking at that, by not funding the nine applications, including not funding applicants that have City of Lacey internal impacts, that would potentially add fifty-seven thousand dollars to the general fund, again, just by having activities that that funding was redirected elsewhere and would be absorbed. So I do have up here again, that kind of line-by-line review for this council to review and discuss the funding recommendations as proposed by the committee, or if you have any questions.
Again, this is probably a comprehension question for me, but in the staff report, in the two thousand and twenty-six budget tool, there are a couple of columns over on the right-hand side and one of them is LTAC average funding by two thousand and twenty-six budget tool. The far column is two thousand and twenty-six LTAC recommendations, which I think is what we've been reviewing.
Correct.
What is the middle column that says Option One, RAC and city located? Because those numbers are different and I think this is what you're recommending, but the staff report says you're recommending Option One.
That is a great point. So the recommendation is that for this column, which is the two thousand and twenty-six LTAC recommendations. This budget tool is something that we use during a meeting and each committee member actually fills out their own individual budget tool prior to the meeting to help kind of guide funding decisions. As you all know, with the budget, looking at things item by item, the committee could be there all night and especially when you have such great community applicants, we could really get into it. So we provide the committee this tool and they return it to us to prepare. So that Option One is actually an option that we provide the committee based on their.
That's not our Option One.
Correct, sorry, yes.
It's their Option One and then they recommended the yellow column to us.
Yes.
And that's, and that's your Option One, it's the yellow column.
Yes, and so that, that average funding is based on the committee members. We take their feedback and kind of just average out and say, here's what you all individually recommended on an average, noting that there are applicants that, we do have some unique lodging tax committee members who are part of activities, so they can't make recommendations, so they are.
Have to recuse themselves from the things that they're connected to.
Yeah, so these are. Exactly, so these are weighted. And then what we do, um, is that the city takes those and then took this year specifically into consideration prioritizing the RAC and Lacey-located events at the discretion and recommendation of this committee and provided that Option One to the committee to use as a starting point. And what we do is we have this up during the meeting and they go line by line and adjust and have discussion and make recommendations. So that far-right column is what came out of that meeting to recommend to you.
That's helpful.
So I have a clarification question. So within the council's purview, what we're able to do, right? I know we can't fund anything that isn't on the list, but we can recommend changing amounts or moving money, correct?
There's kind of two options, you can, well, three options. You can, the council can move forward and approve the list as recommendation, that just go straight to a condition. Or if, say, there's an item on there you don't want to fund, you can go still move forward and not fund that. But if you start adjusting allocations amongst the recipients, then you have to make a proposal back to the LTAC for their consideration and give them forty-five days to consider it and respond back to council.
Good, because my thought, my, my.
That's the three options, right?
Correct, yep.
Because my recommendation, again, I don't know where council is on any of this, but I would take the, so the change in doing this had a fifty-seven thousand dollar impact, some of this on the general fund. My recommendation would be, we take the eighty thousand that we've put aside for the Lacey Fan Zone, which isn't going to be in Lacey, give that eighty thousand to the RAC, further reducing the general fund need for the RAC and freeing up that money, which, you know, actually has a positive impact on our general fund and actually accomplishes something for the city far greater than eighty thousand going to Fan Zone accomplishes.
And that's a great point, Councilmember Greenstein. And I would like to call out too, when the committee made their recommendations, they used the proposed revenues and the estimated revenues from this year and their recommendation for the, um, Lacey Olympia Fan Zone was to fund that out of reserves directly. So any of the allocation that they had put toward the Fan Zone would be coming from lodging tax reserves and not revenues. So just for your awareness too.
Okay, well, yeah, then, I mean, for me, it could be either, either added to the RAC or just eliminated and save the eighty thousand if it's coming out of reserves and not spend eighty thousand in reserves. I'm just, I'm just don't, I can't get behind us giving any money for the Fan Zone, I just can't.
It sounds like from a process.
Just pipe up about the Fan Zone real quick.
Sure.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, the Fan Zone, um, so, you know, the, the reserves that we've been saving, we've been saving for a special one-time event. Um, and/or some, some, something that would draw attention to the area or has a potential to draw attention to the area. Um, one of the reasons why you're seeing, um, the, the Fan Zone dollars at eighty, even though they asked for eighty-four, is that this one-time event, um, some of, some of the things have changed in the scope of how the Fan Zone is going to happen. We, at this point, will be the furthest south Fan Zone because Va- Vancouver has dropped out. Uh, so, so anybody who is in the state of Washington or even Oregon um, would more likely come to, um, Olympia-Lacey Fan Zone than go to Spokane or Seattle if they're going to be a Fan Zone attendee. So, so when, when the opportunity came for us to be the furthest south uh, and have this one-time event, uh, that we probably will never see again, uh, it was kind of one of those situations where, uh, the hoteliers got behind it. Uh, we have two hoteliers on the committee. Uh, they both got behind it and, and thought that it was a great idea uh, and thought that they were going to see some value in it. Um, and so, so, you know, we're still not for sure that the Fan Zone is going to happen. Uh, there's still a lot of talk about whether it's going to happen or not, but there are some other sponsors who are willing to, to get in. Uh, right now, you know, the, the Fan Zone is going to require about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're not even close to that in terms of what these jurisdictions have put together in order to make it happen. What you're seeing here is, um, you know, about a quarter million dollars that we're going to come up with. We're still five hundred thousand dollars short. Is it going to happen? I'm not sure. Uh, however, this is as much as the committee, um, wanted to do and this was driven primarily by the two hoteliers on the committee. Uh, so again, for the south, uh, hoteliers are behind it. Uh, and, 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 um, it's not part of the, the general dollars, but the reserve dollars that we've been saving for years, the reserve dollars, I believe, are two hundred and sixty-one thousand. Of that two hundred and sixty-one thousand, we chose eighty to go towards this one-time event.
And just add one little point to what Deputy Mayor mentioned was, around the question of, you know, there's still a lot of work to be done in order to have this fan festival pulled off the ground. One thing that's nice about the LTAC dollars is reimbursable. And so the, they have to, you know, once, as the council, I think, is fully aware, once this, uh, list is, is approved for funding, each one of these applicants has to come in and sign a contract and then it's reimbursable type of contract. So, um, if, if something doesn't happen, it's not the money's out, it's, it's got to be performance-based.
So where, I mean, Deputy Mayor, where are they planning on finding the other half? I mean, it sounds like they have commitments for a third of the money. Where, where are they thinking about getting the other half a million dollars that they're short?
So from what I understand, and I, I, I've been to all the three city meetings, but I haven't been to the mayor's meetings and I haven't been to some of the other, uh, meetings. But, uh, the Fan Zone representative has let us know that there are other entities who are interested in filling, helping fill the gaps, uh, once they realize whatever our level of commitment is.
My question with the Fan Zone, is there, is there any actual, like, what? It's just changed so much. Is there any actual dedicated plan for what it even looks like? It's so hard to fund something when we don't even have details on what that thing might be and it's like seven months from now.
The scope of what they applied for as far as lodging tax, uh, and what the committee reviewed, again, is only what they put in their application. So in the grand scheme of things, there is some variance that that committee didn't specifically get to review, but the scope of what they provided in their application was to host kind of the watch party activities for the already predetermined and concrete dates. And then also they have a component in their application that included an app that would guide visitors toward the City of Lacey in a scavenger hunt digital style, working with businesses. So those activities and the advanced marketing are the things that they asked for from the Lodging Tax Committee to use that funding specifically for recognizing that there would be some variance in dates based on outcomes and things like that. So there were components specific to lodging tax that had a lot to do with the marketing. And again, that digital app, which, um, based on their application, is anticipated to go live in March of two thousand and twenty-six, that would collaborate with Lacey businesses to do, again, kind of that digital scavenger hunt and checkpoints that visitors would use that app to go to places in Lacey and do things. So for the lodging tax dollars, kind of those preemptive activities were what they proposed using the funding for, which has a more, still up in the air, but definitive intended use of funding at least.
So a question on that, though, if, if they're using money for market, my understanding from what we said earlier, you can use up to forty percent of the money for marketing, not reimbursement money, but upfront. So out of this eighty thousand, forty percent of that they could use, that wouldn't be reimbursed money, they could spend forty percent of that eighty grand.
They would still have to show the market.
And waste it without us having to.
They'd just have to show the marketing activities.
Yeah, but it's not reimbursable, though, we have to give it, we can give it to them, they would get that upfront to do the marketing. That's my understanding, unless I'm wrong.
So what that means is the marketing expenses, they still have to provide us with the receipts that they purchased those marketing. So the reimbursement typically occurs after the activity. So say Watch Party One, they would have to host that and then do the reimbursement after. That forty percent says, hey, if this activity one is in June, but you need to pay your marketing firm in February, once you pay them and give us the receipt in February, we'll give you up to that forty percent in February, but then the rest would come, say, after that June as an example. So they do still have to provide the receipts.
So it's a nuance, yes. Typically, I mean, I think reimbursement after the event, but when I was talking about reimbursable, they'd have to spend on the activity, they're, they're having their scope of work for their contract. So even though their marketing could be in advance of the actual event, that could be funded, up to forty percent of those costs could be funded that before the event, but it still has to be on a reimbursable basis. They have to show that they did that.
Well, they have to show they did the marketing, but they don't have to show the event actually happened. They could market, I mean, there is a real potential here for marketing the event and the event not happen.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, if, if the marketing doesn't bring in people, the event doesn't happen.
Yep.
So from a process perspective, it sounds like if, and I'm not saying I support this, I just want to be clear. If we decide not to fund a particular line item, we could still take action on the recommendation from the committee.
If the.
But if we decide to take money from one line item and put it into a different. event, right, to fully fund something we didn't fully fund, that would have to go back to the committee.
Correct, and once the committee reviews it, then this council can't take action for forty five days. So an estimated timeline, if the stars aligned perfectly and we could get the committee to meet and this council to meet again, the earliest this council would be able to take action would be January twentieth, again, in a very um quick turnaround, which then would look close to mid February for our applicants to receive their agreements. Just um again, it's a kind of estimated impact of that turnaround.
And are you looking for action tonight?
No, not.
On direction, try and get direction.
Direction and bring it back.
So my, I, there's a few different things I'd go over, but the biggest line item on here that I can't even wrap my head around is the Lacey Night Market. It has been such a success and exponentially growing, and it feels like we're cutting the legs out from under it. And so I just can't wrap my head around a forty five thousand dollar request down to five. I mean, what is five thousand? Eight, they host what, twenty events?
Their application recommended, it's like sixteen events for two thousand and twenty six for the night market specifically at the depot.
And, and it has been growing so much, so I'm just trying to understand the decision making there. Where it's like, are we handicapping something that has just been such a, a growing popularity community? Sixteen community events, not one, sixteen. And could that potentially make that?
Could actually happen in Lacey, too.
Yeah, that is all Lacey.
And Councilmember.
There's, there's something, there's something that has to be understood about, about that. Um, so the night market is a one night event. Uh, so, so that kind of handicaps them a little bit. Uh, in addition to that, they don't have as many overnight stays as some of the other um people higher on the list, because they're a one night event, they don't, they're unable to produce as many overnight stays.
And Deputy Mary, do you want to clarify? We are talking about the night market at the depot, which is a multi occurrence event, so it's one night, but multiple occurrences throughout the year.
And I think maybe just a, a, an additional clarification too of um the night market received funding previously, and this would actually, like you're saying, cut funding from the previous year, but I do want to just highlight that as part of this, there's also an additional contract for these types of programs with the city.
So it, it, I don't want to use, uh, the only term I could really use is double dipping, because they do have the contract and then they ask for the additional dollars um from the LTAC. Uh, and, and we gave them as, as much weight as we possibly could. As, as you guys know, we go through, we don't, we don't kind of, we, we, we have to go through each one of these and have a discussion on each one of these individually. So sometimes we're there three, four hours. Um, but, but that was the, the decision that the, the, the committee came up with for the night market.
So because of the contract, then they're still going to be able to do their sixteen events, in other words. This is not going to impact their.
And that's a question that the committee asks on their application and that applicants include is, if you didn't receive your funding ask, to what degree can you still host your activities? And that's kind of broken out into can you host your activities completely? Would there be a reduction or would you have to cancel? And so that is information applicants put in to their application and that the lodging tax advisory committee reviews as part of their selection process.
And they did say they'd be able to fully do their sixteen events, though it wouldn't have an impact?
Yes, and I can confirm.
So I'm gonna chime in here a little bit. Um, obviously, uh we've given a lot of deference to the LTAC committee's uh recommendation. Um, and the state legislature gave them even more uh deference, you know, a few years back when some legislation was passed that said, uh, you know, as a council, we, we, it's, it makes it very difficult for us to go back and, and, and second guess the LTAC committee's uh recommendations. Um, you know, if, if we had a majority of us who says, no, we're absolutely not going to fund an event, uh that is within our purview. Uh, but any other recommendation about changing anything else has to go back to LTAC committee. And then they don't have to, I mean, uh ta- take our, our recommendation. It's, it's kind of a, a, a fluid, you know, a process. So the LTAC committee has a, a lot of deference um on, on what they choose. I, I think one of the things that we do have to think about going forward is that all this happened before, you know, a lot of this happened before uh we knew what the, you know, long term impact of, of the rack was going to be, um, you know, be, before we knew the outcome of the um Metropolitan Park District is passed or not. And I do think, uh, you know, a- as we go forward, I think there needs to be even more of a discussion on making sure that the rack is fully functioning because it is the number one head and bed, you know, verifiable heads and beds out of anything that we do. And I would like to see probably more LTAC dollars going to support the rack than we have, we've typically done in the past. But um, you know, I can nitpick several of these as well, like, for example, uh, the, the, the Olympia and beyond, you know, they've spent this entire year without an executive director. Um, and so they have, you know, a considerable amount of savings. I have no idea what work's been done in this year, and so it, it doesn't make sense to me to fund them at the same level when they should have a considerable amount of savings uh within their budget. And so I, I just don't understand, you know, how are we funding them at the same level? But again, I'm not on the LTAC committee. And uh, the number one, you know, you know, for me, is like, what do the hoteliers say? Because this is hoteliers who are paying into this. This is all funds being collected by the hotels, period. And so they have the very, the, the top priority in, in my mind is what, whatever uh that they feel like should be funded. I think, you know, i- it's hard to say, hey, you're going to tax yourself, and then you're going to have a bunch of elected officials uh second guess them on, on what they think is, is good for them or not. I, I don't think so. I, you know, I think it's up to the, a lot of the hoteliers to, to, to make these decisions. And um if, if whatever, you know, if they have some major priorities here, then I'm not going to second guess them at all. Um, all that being said, I do think there has to be a shift going forward uh about the rack. Um, you know, we're, we're expanding, anything that has to do with the rack, um, whether events are going on there, uh, you, you name it, has to be the number one priority, in my opinion, because we know how verifiable that is. You know, the other, the other things, you know, with these events, say they, they're verifiable heads and beds, uh, you know, I think we have to take some of that with a, with a grain of salt. But um, you know, at this point, I'm not going to go back and tell LTAC committee, I'm sorry, I think you got it wrong. Uh, I'm just not going to do that. Um, I do think we have to have some, you know, really strategic discussions about the dollars that, that, you know, general fund dollars going in uh to maintain the rack. Does it make sense uh that we continue to use general fund dollars for that? Uh, when we have a funding source um that's available to us through this, that clearly puts, meets all the criteria uh for the LTAC funds. And I think also the hoteliers would agree it is something that's extremely important uh for them. Um, that's a, I think that's an ongoing discussion. I think we've stepped in the right direction here. I don't necessarily agree with all the LTAC's funding, but I didn't sit in those meetings either. And, and, and so, um, you know, at this point, I'm going to give deference to the, the, the process. And, you know, in years past, we've just put this in the budget because LTAC recommendation's gone in the budget, and that's, that's the way it's been done, especially since the uh, the legislature passed uh, you know, even stricter guidelines on, on LTAC uh recommendations. Um, and so, I, again, I'm in support with LTAC committee came up with this year, but uh I think going forward, we, we, we need to have a serious, serious conversation with the, you know, with LTAC committee about uh our contributions, uh, you know, uh, our general fund contributions to the rack and what makes sense. And, and can that continue to be the, the biggest priority to make sure that's, you know, functioning and operating uh effectively and efficiently. And, and any events that are happening there are, are really important too, um, that help support, you know, the, the operations and everything else. So that, that's where I am at on this. I'm, I'm not going to second get, second guess the LTAC committee, and I, and I'm in support their, their recommendation.
Definitely. Thank you for your support in uh the um all, all the, the items on the list that you're seeing right here tonight. Um, you know, we, 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 again, we go through them one at a time. Uh, and sometimes we, and, and then we also have uh a representative come in and have uh those discussion with, with us and ask those questions. Uh, when it comes to the Experience Olympia and Beyond, um, the, the recommendation uh for their funding level was approved by both the hoteliers. And I think part of that was because of the relationship that they have with Experience Olympia Beyond that um in, in addition to, to the funding levels, um, they, they do, and the geo fencing and the services that they provide to the other LTAC uh recipients, uh they also provide additional services uh to, to the hoteliers. Uh, even though one of the hoteliers said, hey, you've, you've fallen off a little bit um in your communication with us, we need you to pick back up uh and be that support for us, uh, which they recognized and said, yeah, we, we've, we've been without uh some staff this year, but um we do understand that, that we need to, to serve you guys a little bit better. Uh, and, and that's part of, you know, what happens in these meetings. And so you'll see some of the other things uh on there um and, and, and some of the behind the scenes, seen things that you guys may or may not see, is that a lot of these um events um will contract with Lacey Hotels uh and put those Lacey Hotels on their website in their print materials uh and making sure that they're establishing that connective tissue with the hoteliers of Lacey uh to, because we've, you know, we took a chance on them, they appreciated that chance, they've, they've come back year after year uh and given um, done more for the city of Lacey every year that they've come back. Uh, and so, so um, you know, part of this was a relationship establishing and another part was, you know, uh continuing a, a relationship that was already there. But then, you know, under council's direction, we wanted to make sure that any extra funds went to the rack. Um, any funds that we thought could be funded by another source went to the rack. And in addition to that, you know, the half million dollars that we've been sitting on for the field replacement is still intact uh and gaining interest every year. So um, we felt like, you know, these recommendations, even though we didn't get to fund everybody that we wanted to fund, we tried our hardest to, to make sure that the heads and beds uh went first. Uh, and then when we look at the heads and beds for the Regional Athletic Complex and Experience Olympia Beyond, they're neck and neck. Um, they're tied. I think actually the Olympia, Experience Olympia Beyond had uh like two hundred more heads and beds annually shown than the uh, than the rack had. So they're, they're pretty neck and neck. So um in, in, in addition to their, their relationships that they have uh with the hoteliers, uh, they, 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 I, there was only one dissenting vote on that recommend, that funding recommendation level for them. Uh, and, and that one, you know, there's five votes in the room. So um, this is just kind of a list of, of several meetings over a four month period, uh, you know, that, that kind of culminated into what you guys are seeing here tonight.
I personally would like to see what the reimbursement for that hundred thousand dollars actually looks like, because I've never actually seen it.
The VCB, isn't that your committee?
So what do you?
Reimbursement for something, I think it's important that we see what that's if. And they're getting the full amount requested and other people aren't. I, I think it's important to see that.
Yeah, and there have been uh quarterly reports, LTAC reports that we've sent out, council most haven't won at the end of the year. So I could read uh go back and find those and send them back, council.
And I do agree with Mayor Ryder that, like, the rack is a need, everything else is like a nice to have. But the rack is the thing that, like, that costs us, you know, re-crea money out of our reserves every single, every single year. And until we are in a better place financially, it just doesn't make sense to pay for nice to haves.
So I appreciate the work of the committee to increase the allocation to the rack because that, they did that, and that was something that we expressed. And as a result of the direction that council gave, the rack is receiving a larger reimbursement this year. I can support the recommendations of the LTAC committee this year.
Councilmember Cox, Sissy, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Well, I'm, I'm with Robin and the mayor on this. The LTAC committee has worked long and hard on this. They took our feedback already. And I think we need to approve the list that they submitted to us.
What do, what do you need from us today? You're not looking for action today.
I'm looking for action tonight.
The next steps, actually, uh, would be to finalize these awards. And so one of the recommendations in the staff report at this council's discretion is that they would like to proceed with the recommendations as proposed would be to bring that back for a consent agenda item to approve. And then the next steps with that would be for city staff to notify successful applicants and work on drafting those agreements. I do want to point out up there, there is a review of the twenty twenty five outcomes that the committee regularly reviews. That's also when the committee reviews things like application criteria, scoring criteria, and makes adjustments to funding cycle. And so that would be something I think would, from what I'm hearing from this council, wanting to look at more long term priorities that um, maybe this council would like to see and have some input and recommendation on future funding cycle priorities and input as far as that, which we typically do in Q two of the year following. So I think we could address some of the concerns and questions that I heard from this council tonight at that time and look closer before next year's funding cycle at more detailed information.
So I, I think there's enough, I mean, there's, there's clearly at least four council members. And again, four of seven, that's, that's how we make decisions on a council. So I think you have the support you need for bringing it back. I would not support it being on the consent agenda, and I will, I will make a motion at that time, if it's on the consent agenda, to remove it from the consent agenda. I want this to be voted on in the public light, not hidden in the consent agenda.
You will, uh, yeah, I heard the same thing, that there's enough to bring it forward to council for final actions of recommendation as proposed, and it will not be on the consent agenda. We'll put it under
Thank you.
um, the city manager report and then, or, and uh have the conversation at the council meeting.
Appreciate that.
Fair enough.
Councilmember Cox, Deputy Mayor, uh, Mayor, you're okay with that strategy or that plan?
That's fine.
Just if, if there is more information that comes out about the um, the Fan Zone between, you know, now and then, is there opportunity, right? Because it's just a reimbursement, I guess, it just wouldn't.
There, there is continual conversations about the
Yeah.
about putting the fans on the ga- the Thurston Chamber and their um, um consultant, Jenny Fonge Jones, has been pulling information and getting refined. It's still, uh, I don't have anything concrete as official presentation to the city, but we can see what we can find and what they have in plans and, and, yeah. But the one thing they have been working on is, as Sadie mentioned earlier, the, the pre-work of this, um, I just want to blank on the app name.
I don't know that they gave us the official name, but.
But, but it's a nap system where people can come and they get awards and prizes for visiting local businesses and the trails, and they've already demonstrated, uh, did a demo of that, trusted out, and it's working. So there, there are things that are moving towards that end. But we can get some more information for you before we uh come to the back to council meeting.
And the information as far as that lodging tax applications at this point won't change, but certainly the events and activities can evolve in our, as you know, our city manager and other staff are involved in hearing about that. So they can definitely update you on that. It just wouldn't change what they put in their application for lodging tax specifically.
Okay. There's then nothing further from council? Everyone's good? I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you very much.